Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education Open Session Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I love being on time. Thank you. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School kids, and we'll start off with an introduction by their wonderful principal, Dr. Jeff Zemiriba.
Thank you, Board President Lockerbie, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and members of the community. It is indeed my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School, and I have two wonderful 7th graders to bring up here. Winston Chin and Eleanor Ridley are going to come up and take it away.
Good evening, Board President Lockerbie, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and members of the community. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Again, good evening, Monrovia Unified Board of Education, Cabinet and Monrovia Community members. My name is Winston Chin, and I am a 7th grader, 7th grade student at Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. This year, I am taking zero-period PE so that I can attend both the College and Career Readiness Lab as well as the Mandarin Program. I am so grateful for the opportunities to grow in middle school that will prepare me for high school and college. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Ridley, and I'm a 7th grader at Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. I've been in the Mandarin Dual Immersion Program since kindergarten. I enjoy being in the DI program because of the opportunities it provides me for my future. Bloomberg Online News source reports that Mandarin is one of the most-used languages in business besides English. I also enjoy learning about other cultures and languages, Chinese being one of my favorites. In the DI program, I am not only learning the language, but the culture, traditions, and lifestyle. In the future, I wish to travel, and China is one of the places I would like to go the most. So, learning the language would help me a lot when I'm able to. Living along the Pacific Rim, there is a high population of Asian-Americans. In the 2020 census, it was reported that 24 million people in the USA identified as Asian-Americans. Being able to speak fluently would give me the advantage in succeeding. My teacher, Mr. Chi, holds an after-school program called the Chinese Culture Club. We learn how to play Chinese chess, ping-pong, and watch short movies in Chinese. I appreciate it as a fun thing that helps us to understand the language, and I hope we can continue to do it. I hope to continue learning this beautiful language at Monrovia High School and into college. Xie xian ni rong wo fei xiang wo xiang de shuang yi zong wen ke cheng. Zui ni you yi ge meihao de wang shang.
Thank you. Thank you to both of them, and as we say every morning at school in announcements, excellent, honor, and cougar pride, but tonight, Jie Yi, Rong Yao, Hao Qi!
Thank you so much, Dr. Z, and Winston and Eleanor. That is just absolutely inspirational. Thank you so much for coming and being with us tonight and sharing all that inspires you. What inspires you inspires us. Can we take a picture with you? Awesome. And moving on to roll call, item number three. All Board members are present, as is our Superintendent Dr. Smith and Executive Cabinet. Thank you all very much for being here this evening. Moving on to Order of Business. Board Agenda Discussion, Presentation of Items, which could include input from Representatives of Agendized Matters, may be moved up on the agenda. Dr. Smith, do we have any changes in the Order of Business?
Good evening. We do not.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Board of Education Meeting on August 10th. May I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Becerra, call for a vote, please.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Golar?
Yes.
Board President Lockerbie?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Recognitions and Communications. Dr. Smith, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
There, just to be clear, there's no board reports. Seamless. So again, greetings, Board members, teachers, staff, community, parents, family, and friends. I have a few things that I'd like to share with everybody, starting with how we kicked off the start of the school year. Before we welcomed our students back on Wednesday, last Wednesday, for their first official day, the school year for our teachers and staff officially kicked off the prior Monday. And our theme this year was gearing up, or gear up. And it was such a fantastic opportunity to kick off our year with all of our staff, teachers, counselors, classified, certificated district leadership, and have everyone together for the first time technically in three years. Even though we had an all-staff-in-service last year, we still had a number of people tuning into that remotely due to some of the concerns related to the COVID outbreak with the Delta variant at the time. During our time together, we celebrated employees who reached milestones in years of service to MUSD. We welcomed new certificated and classified staff and leaders, and we also had an opportunity to review our new vision, mission, focus areas, core values, as well as our goals. Some of the big highlights from that particular day were our student performances. Sierra Zeimer from the high school gave a fantastic rendition of the National Anthem, and we also had performances by Jordan Kaufman from Mayflower, Sofia Grace Federico from Clifton, and Daisy Thomas from MHS. We have such talented students, and it was a pleasure to put that on full display. And I'm grateful to our Director of Performing Arts, Patrick Garcia, for helping make all of that possible. We also heard from some very important student speakers. One of the things that I believe, and I know this Board believes is quite important, is that we recognize student voice. And there's no time like the beginning of the school year to really hear from our students and get their wisdom, their insights, and learn a little bit about what they would like us to know as we embark in a new school year. And Lily Vandermolen from Monroe, whose mother is actually with us tonight, Rachel, she'll be appearing later as the Food Ed item comes up. Jesus Urias from Santa Fe, and Natalie Nash from Monrovia High School. All three together had such a powerful message that was really inspirational. And it was great to hear a student from each one of those levels. We also had an opportunity to hear from our Teacher of the Year, Maria Lomelin, and again, she was quite inspirational in her own right. So I think we kicked off the year in all of the right ways. Couldn't be prouder of everybody for coming together and having a really good time, and the energy was really fantastic. So that led into the actual kickoff of the new year, where we welcomed our students back to school for the first day of school last Wednesday. And by all accounts, this was an incredibly successful day. These pictures speak for themselves. Lots of smiling students, lots of smiling parents. And I couldn't be more appreciative to our principals, our teachers, our staff, for really rolling out literally the red carpet in many cases to greet our students back, to welcome those who are new to the Monrovia Unified Family, and to welcome those who are returning to the Monrovia Unified Family. Having that in first day is such, having such a great first day is so critical, and I really think we got off to a great start. I'd like to give a special shout-out to our custodians, our Maintenance Operations and Transportation Division, as well as Nutrition Services, our office managers, and all of our assistants, who in the weeks leading up really had to come together to get our campuses looking great, get kids registered, answer questions of parents, welcome new students. I am so grateful to all of them for their tireless work getting us ready. I'm also really thrilled to formally introduce some new administrators to the Board. The Board, over the course of the summer, and even, I think, back into June, has appointed quite a few new administrators, new members of our family, although few of them aren't so new. And it's a privilege to introduce each of them tonight and welcome them up to the dais to say a few words and introduce their families if they have them with them. So I'd like to start with our new principal at Plymouth Elementary School, Jen Jennifer Malgin. Come on up. Jennifer is a familiar face in the district, having served for many years as a TK-12 instructional coach in the area of educational technology. She was also a middle school teacher here in Monrovia, as well as a middle school English and ELD teacher in Pasadena Unified prior to joining us. Not only is Ms. Malgin an outstanding educational leader, she is a parent of a Monrovia student, or students, I believe, and she is also a resident of our community as well. So welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Board President Lockerbie, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and members of the community. I just want to say thank you for the privilege and honor to be leading Plymouth Elementary School. I do have a special place in my heart for Plymouth, as both of my children are former Dragons. And like Dr. Smith said, I've lived in the community for several years, so I feel like my heartstrings are pulled there. I do have my daughter here. She's gonna be so embarrassed I'm pointing her out tonight, Madison, because my husband Rafi and Micah had to go to soccer tonight. So I said, "Please come be my family with me tonight." But I'm so excited to lead this community. We have such supportive families, amazing staff. And this is my, completed my first week as principal down there, and just the opportunity to meet and greet families at car line, you know, drop-off and pickup, and get to know kids' names, and seeing the community they're building within their classrooms at their morning meetings has just been really special for me this week. So thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome, Jennifer. And if I'm not mistaken, Jennifer, it's your anniversary today, is it not? Kinda? Well, congratulations, Jennifer. Next, we also, I'm also proud to introduce one of our new Assistant Principals at Monrovia High School, Mr. Dominic Picone. Dominic? Dominic comes to us with an extensive background, including a background in law, which is, you know, part of his kind of interesting skill set that he brings to us. He also holds a bachelor's degree from Notre Dame, which this USC fan is willing to overlook. Prior to joining us here in Monrovia, he was the Assistant Principal at Shur High School, was also a program specialist, and also served at the district level as the Assistant Director of Community Relations in Montebello Unified School District. Prior to that, he was an athletic director, teacher, and coach in El Rancho, and has teaching experience out of state in the great state of Texas as well. Welcome, Dominic. Glad you're here.
Thank you very much. Madam Board President, and the rest of the Board members, as well as the Cabinet, I really appreciate the confidence that you've shown in me. I'm really happy to be here. I'm learning a lot about the culture of not only the high school, but also the community, and I like what I've seen so far. So thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my family. My wife, Ida. She's a, she used to be a colleague of mine for 14 years. We were colleagues at El Rancho High School. She's a varsity volleyball coach, both boys and girls. My son, Esteban, is a 6th grader, I'm sorry, a 7th grader.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, Esteban. My daughter, Yumili, is an 11th grader in high school, at El Rancho High School. And then my daughter, Sophia, tomorrow is headed out to New York to begin her sophomore year at Fordham University. And on a side note, I'm glad that most of the men in the audience got the memo to wear the blue suit tonight, so. Thank you, guys.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dominic. Next, I'd like to introduce our Assistant Principal at Mountain Park Canyon Oaks, Brian Illaragai. Brian, come on up. Brian is also a familiar face here in Monrovia Unified, having served for the last several years as an instructional coach at the district level. Prior to that, he taught for, I believe, over 20 years at Monrovia High School in the English Department, and has held roles as interim Assistant Principal, summer school principal, department chair, and everything in between. Brian also has experience with coaching, not just academic coaching, but also athletic coaching. And he has extensive experiences with leading WASC, which is so important at the secondary level. And a key highlight there is he successfully led the high school last year despite some interesting circumstances related to COVID at the time of the visit through a highly successful WASC revisit. So again, please welcome Brian Illaragai. Brian?
Thank you, Board President Lockerbie, Board members, Cabinet, Dr. Smith. Yeah, and I'm just honored to be here. I have been honored to be a colleague with one of our Board members, to have had some of your kids in my classrooms, to have coached a son. I'm just privileged to have been in this community for 25 years. I'm absolutely thrilled to now be joining the administrative ranks. I'm looking forward to the work that we're gonna get to do at Canyon Oak Mountain Park, and just to add into a long and enjoyable career in Monrovia. Thank you for this opportunity.
Brian, did you have family you wanted to introduce as well, please? Yeah, you shouldn't walk out of here having overlooked that, since you had your wife come down to the boardroom. So would you mind introducing who you have with you, please?
Thank you for saving me. Joining me this evening is my wife, Kristy. Our two daughters, Hannah and Jana, could not join us as they got home late from school today. But that is my family. Thank you.
Right on. And then last, but certainly not least, one of our most recent hires. Please welcome Arin Golstani, who is our Director of Information Technology. Arin joins us from West Covina Unified School District, where he was a Senior Systems Analyst. Prior to that, he was an informational analyst in Glendale Unified, as well as a data clerk and tech support at a private law firm. His experience is quite detailed and quite in-depth, having successfully been a key part of the rollout of the One-to-One Device Initiative in his prior district. He's also led work that's related to network infrastructure overhaul and security upgrade experience, and has several, several different experiences with a lot of the softwares we use, in particular things like Helios and Ares and other areas. Arin, welcome to the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, President Lockerbie, members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, members of Cabinet and community. Just really want to thank everybody here for affording me the opportunity to join the wonderful team here at Monrovia Unified. Everybody has been nothing less but welcoming, including staff and leadership. So I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to utilize my knowledge and expertise in technology to help push Monrovia's mission of providing a world-class education to our students. And I'm looking forward to just, you know, pushing the, the district's initiatives as far as technology is concerned, to not only, like I mentioned, support our students, but also our community and staff in providing an unparalleled experience and education in the classroom. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. And welcome, Arin. And Arin has already hit the ground running. He even hit the ground running before he officially started. So we thank you for that. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to welcome up to the dais a representative from Amigos de los Rios, Angela Miramontes. Angela is here at President Lockerbie's request to share some information with the Board related to advocacy, I believe, around a particular bill. Angela, welcome.
Hi, thank you for the invitation. I'm gonna take this off. So I really appreciate being here today. Thank you for having me, everyone, and welcome all the new hires. My name is Angela Miramontes, and I work with Amigos de los Rios. We are an urban greenie nonprofit that specializes in creating native plant ecosystems in our parks and schools. We install features such as previous pavement with rain gardens and bioswales to help replenish our aquifer, outdoor classrooms that facilitate creative learning in a positive environment, and walking paths and bike trails that promote healthy living. We work in the greater Los Angeles area, and most recently, here in Monrovia. We've worked at Plymouth Elementary and Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. Our organization also works closely with a few other local nonprofits, the Sierra Club Day One, Latino Outdoors, and together, we are Nature for All. So Nature for All has been working to protect our public lands and green open spaces and connect Angelenos to nature since 2008. Our work to protect public lands became recognized in 2014 when the San Gabriel Mountains National Recreation Area Bill was signed into law by President Obama. Since then, we have expanded our mission to conserve resources and be more climate resilient, create more natural spaces in our historically underserved neighborhoods, and connect people and public lands through more trails. So we're accomplishing those goals with creating environmental stewards. So we have a Leadership Academy. We're also advocating for policies and programs that connect people to public lands through transit access and improved recreation facilities. So for that, we have the Los Angeles-San Gabriel Mountains Urban Shuttle System, which will provide access to mountain destinations such as Mount Wilson Observatory and the West Fork National Scenic Bike Way. And lastly, we are actively working to protect and expand the San Gabriel National Monument so that we may safeguard our natural resources and provide access to nature for our diverse urban population. And that's what brings me here tonight. Our work has continued since 2008, and we are advocating to expand protections on our local mountain range with the Public Lands Act. This bill was introduced in 2021 with the support of Senator Padilla and Tongva Leader Chief Anthony Morales. This bill was successfully brought to a vote in the House and passed in 2021. And so the Public Lands Act will protect an additional 1 million acres of public lands and more than 500 miles of rivers here in the San Gabriel Mountains, the Santa Monica Mountains, the Central Coast, and Northwest California. It's a key step forward to ensuring equitable access to public lands and achieving California's goal to conserve 30% of its lands and waters by 2030. The San Gabriel Mountains provide 70% of Los Angeles County's open space, anywhere between 30% to 90% of our drinking water, and currently upwards of 3 million visitors a year. This is the only national monument with no public transit to or from the park. So the need has never been greater for improved visitor services, access to nature, and expanded natural resource protection. So to address these issues, the Public Lands Act provides for the following protections. So we would like to expand the San Gabriel National Monument by 100,000 acres, establish a recreational area in the San Gabriel and San Jose foothills that connect the Rio Hondo and the San Gabriel Rivers, and designate 45 additional miles of wild and scenic rivers in our mountain range. We're hoping to expand on wilderness-designated areas within our San Gabriel Mountains, which is really important. This part is the part of the bill that would bring federal funds to our local park. And these funds would help in purchasing porta-potties, bringing in dumpsters, establishing trails with proper trailhead signs, and more importantly, the funds would help with our River Ranger Program, help to create a nature center with the goal of being more like the Santa Monica Mountains. We would like to create opportunities for our next generation of outdoor explorers here. So in order to accomplish this goal, we need support from as many school boards, city councils, elected officials, local businesses, to show the Senate that we all here have pride in our natural resources, and we want to protect these spaces for future generations. And so this objective is more important now than ever with climate change. And we would love to receive the support of Monrovia Unified School District. And so for the Board and the Cabinet members and everyone, I've provided what we're doing within our area and how to reach us when it comes to Nature for All. That's it, yep, and supporting us in the future. And we hope to hear from you all. So thank you again for having me here tonight and giving me a few minutes of your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Angela. And that concludes my Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you, everybody who was recognized this evening. We will move on to Public Comments. The Board of Education encourages public participation and invites you to share your views on school business. In order to accomplish board business in a timely and efficient manner, public input is limited to no more than three minutes per person, per agenda or non-agenda item. Ms. Becerra, do we have anyone to comment for public comments on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments for items on the open session agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Section Eight, sorry, Section H, Public Information Officer Update. That would be Gustavo Ogim. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Board President Lockerbie, members of the Board, Dr. Smith, Cabinet members, community here and watching online. My name is Gustavo Ogim. I am the Public Information Officer from Monrovia Schools, and today I'll be presenting some of the work I've been doing since I was hired a little less than a year ago today. Next slide, please. So here are the four key subjects that we're gonna be focusing on today. Social media, social media performance, promoting schools' programs, showcasing MUSD students and staff, and advertising jobs. Right now, here's the current list of social media platforms that MUSD uses. We have the major ones so far: Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Twitter, YouTube. And this presentation will only be going over numbers from January 1st to July 31st. And the reason for that is our contract with VMA ended December 31st. So it's just easier to see what I did by myself rather than find out what VMA did and what I did when I first started. And I just want to point out that Instagram and LinkedIn have only been created within the last year since I started. So we're gonna be focusing on driving those during my time here. Next slide, please. So these overall numbers are from all of our social media platforms. We had almost 158, or had 157,000 impressions on social media. That means whenever somebody's scrolling on their phone or on their computer, when our content pops up on their feed. So that could be somebody that follows us, that could be members of the community. And the reason why this number is important, the more impressions we drive and the more activity we drive, the more likely Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn is gonna suggest our profile to people that don't already follow us. So that would help us build our presence in our community and also help reach people that may have not heard of all the things going on at MUSD. And it's hard for me to quantify that number just because I don't have VMA's numbers from the previous year, but this will at least give us a baseline going forward, and I could have something to compare to in the future. Our followers for all of our social media is almost at 7,300. We've gained around 560. We've gained around 560, maybe close to 600 followers since January 1st. A lot of those numbers have come from the Instagram just because it is brand-new, but it has been really nice to see our numbers go up, our traction go up across the board for all of our platforms. And some of the key changes that helped make this happen: daily posting, personalized content, and then working with our partners, sharing stuff when we work together, and making sure they help share that with their followers as well, like from Monrovia Days or Food Ed whenever we work on projects together. Next slide, please. And just to give you guys a heads up on some of our best-performing posts, this was when Gina Ayala won, I believe, Middle School Teacher of the Year from the California League of Schools. Over 5,000 impressions, over 500 reactions, and 100 comments. I know this was a big deal for all of us, especially seeing one of our own win a prestigious award like that, and it couldn't have happened to somebody that we all love. Gina is great so far, at least from what I've met and what you guys know. Next slide, please. Lastly, I would like to go over the YouTube channel. The only reason why I chose the October date instead of the other one is because this is one platform that I've been working on solely, and it's been one of my biggest things I've been trying to improve. We've had a lot of content on our YouTube channel before I got here, but a lot of it was from 2020, maybe 2019. So it was very dated when you showed up to it, and it was kind of sporadic. It was hard to find a constant posting on there. And I've been, I don't know if you guys have seen all of them, but I've put together 43 videos. We've had almost 11,000 views, almost 190 hours viewed, and we just crossed over 200 subscribers earlier this week, so some growth on our YouTube channel as well. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to show you guys our best-performing YouTube video since I started. It was the Monrovia Holiday Parade. I know that was a big event, definitely post Delta, post, you know, everything that's happened, so I'm sure the community was really excited to get out there. And I've only had like 20 seconds of these videos to show you guys, just so it's not the entire thing, but I do want to play some of these. Yeah, it's just a little taste of our best-performing YouTube video. Next slide, please. So some of the key takeaways, looking at the numbers and looking at our social media overall. Families want to know who's leading our schools. Anytime we have a new principal, anytime we have a new district leadership person, it does really well on our social media, and that shows people are interested in who's leading their students. And I think that's very important to highlight anytime, especially with all the people that Dr. Smith presented today. We have a lot of new leadership, and a lot of our community wants to know who these people are. So as our teams get settled, I'll be going around and doing my best to highlight these people, just to make sure that not only our community, but you know, some of our staff that haven't met them as well. And of course, showcasing student achievements, it's a big reason why I think a lot of people stay in education for so long or come into education in the first place. Showcasing anytime our students achieve something, it shows, one, you know, we're doing something right, but two, they're showing us that, hey, our schools are working, but you're showcasing us more than what we could have done on our own. Also, highlighting our outstanding staff. The example with Gina Ayala, I think, was a good example of that. People love anytime our teachers, our custodians, anybody gets an award and they're highlighted for that. And like I said, this is now giving me a baseline to see where we can improve, and maybe if there's some reason why the numbers aren't up to par within the next six months. Next slide, please. The next section I would like to focus on is promoting schools and programs. Some of the things I've been doing: creating commercials for each of our schools, visualizing programs around MUSD, updating websites to showcase each school's strengths, and then social media spotlights based on each program. Next slide, please. The school commercials was an idea that I talked about with Paige Ramos over at Wildrose initially, and I thought it was a fantastic idea just to give our schools a quick, you know, two- to three-minute video highlighting what the school's about for not only our parents that are already enrolled, but for prospective parents that are interested in Wildrose, that are interested in Clifton, Santa Fe, and we could just give them a quick hitter of like, here's what we have to offer. And I would like to play some of this video as well, please.
Hi, my name is Tom McFadden. I'm the Director of Expanded Learning Programs here in Monrovia Unified, and I provide leadership for our preschool program and our Village Extended School Programs.
So, thank you, Tom, for the assist. So these videos have been really big in terms of what people are watching. I finished Monroe's commercial over summer, and we're already up to around 250 views over the last month or so. So it's an easy way to, one, showcase our schools, but also just give people some basic information on what's going on. And I think I'm almost halfway. I'm hoping to get all of our schools done by the end of this school year. Next slide, please. This one has been one of my favorite sections, visualizing programs. We have a lot of hands-on programs within Monrovia, and it's easy to explain them in a paragraph or a quick summary, but being able to show what these programs do and visualize what students will be learning has, one, been really fun for me, but I think it's helped a lot of students, maybe that aren't sure if they want to go into automotive sciences or want to know what sports medicine is about, and that's the example that I have for here.
Every sports team needs its support staff to finish the season as healthy as possible. At Monrovia High School, that support comes from the sports medicine students on the sideline.
I always tell the students, we're a service.
So yeah, very quick hitters. If you guys can watch it, you go to our YouTube channel. Yeah, but it's been really fun because I get to showcase some of our top scholars or top students in these programs, and then I get to do some explaining of what this program is, you know, what you would learn, and then showcase it in this video. Next slide, please. So another big part of what I've been doing for promoting our schools is updating websites. Thank you. Over the summer, I audited every single one of our sites, seeing where buttons went, seeing what was out of date, just seeing where we were behind. And so far, I've reached out to every single site. I'm working with them to make sure those get done within a timely matter. I know with the start of school, it's difficult to do, but I made sure that they know that I'm here to support them, and these are a couple of the examples. Just making sure we have current handbooks, making sure our CTE pathways section is actually built out, and it's a huge task undertaking, but so far, I'm chipping away at it just to make sure everything's updated. Next slide, please. And when it comes to promoting our school, just a couple of social media posts that did really well. The one on the left is our robotics teams that went to SoCal Regionals. They didn't advance all the way to Worlds, but they did a great job, and our rookie team made it all the way to semifinals, so I loved checking in with them once that was over. And then just promoting that four of our schools made the U.S. News report, "Top Schools of 2022." I remember I scheduled that to go out when I was on vacation, and my phone was blowing up, and I thought something wrong was happening. And then it just turns out we had almost 100 shares of people just really proud of our schools being included on these lists. Next slide, please. So this has been a recent project. I've been working with Dr. Puccia and Mr. Shana Huff on advertising our jobs on social media as well. It's a big reason why I took over the LinkedIn page and had it created, so we can start getting more eyes on our open jobs. You can go to EdJoin and see the list of jobs, but the social media post is just another way to get them to go to our website, to get them to go to EdJoin and see what job posts are available. Next slide, please. These are a couple of the posts. Thank goodness, our director of IT was already filled, but I have a running social media campaign called Work Wednesday, so every Wednesday I just highlight a different job opening that we have, and it's just another way to get them to go to EdJoin. And then maybe some of the jobs that are harder to fill, at least there's another way for us to promote it. And I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce as well to include a lot of these in their weekly newsletter anytime I do create a new one of these. Next slide, please. Next section, showcase MUSD students and staff, student spotlights for programs and events, and highlight different departments around MUSD. Next slide, please. This was one of my favorite stories to put together with Tamika Samuels. She got the, I'm going to mess this up really quick, the Posse Scholarship, thank you, Dr. Smith, to go to Middlebury College. So I sat down with her, talked a little bit about the decision, how she found out, and just, you know, showcasing one of our exemplary students, and just how that process went for her, some advice she might have for students looking for scholarships. And I've been trying to do more written stuff and just more different ways to promote our students. Next slide, please. And then these videos have been a lot of fun just because I get to see what some of our different departments get to do. So I've done groundskeeper videos, sped instructional aids videos, meet the principal series, and I have a couple more in the works that I hope to have done pretty soon. I just hope to play this real quick.
It's not easy to maintain the vast granary at all of our schools. Ten sites and dozens of acres. Monrovia Unified Groundskeepers have to start early if they want to get the job done.
Another tease. In the end, I showcased what they do, and then I also promoted when we have job openings. So it's kind of like a dual video, but for the most part, I just want to highlight some of the groups that might not get the attention, or maybe, you know, they go home before we even get in, because our groundskeepers, our bus drivers, they're some of the first people that get here, and I would love to share the spotlight on more groups like that. Next slide. So this has been another huge project with the website. With EdLeo, our current website provider, we get a free redesign after X amount of years. It came to my knowledge that we didn't take advantage of the previous free redesign, so when I found out there was an opportunity to do this, I jumped on and made sure that we got our free design and just to make our site a little bit more modern. It is ready to go. I am double-checking stuff on the backend just to make sure buttons work, but we do right now have it scheduled to go live on September 6th, the day after Labor Day, and we're going to start building some hype for it next week, just so people are aware that our websites are going to look a little bit different soon. Next slide. And this is just a quick screenshot of the homepage of what it's going to look like. I know our mission and vision was established this year, and it's been a big part of our driving force and our focus areas for Monrovia Unified, so it's a big reason why we wanted to showcase that on our homepage where you don't have to go and find it. It's right there, and people will know what Monrovia Unified stands for. Next slide. So some of our next steps, based on all this information, build up our presence on LinkedIn. Since I just, since it was recently created, use software like HootSuite, which will give me more detailed analytics, will help me find out more things number-wise to present to you, and then also for me to learn on how we can improve. Start using some paid ads on social media to reach people outside of our following. Train site staff to maintain the websites. I've met with around half the site staff. A lot of the people that are maintaining the sites might not have website experience, so I'm letting them know, I'm here to help. I've provided training assets for them to view, and just making sure to help them any way I can with their websites. Create highlight videos for each one of our schools. Like I said, I'm almost halfway, hoping to finish all of them by the end of the year, and then finalizing the new website. Next slide. And I just like, wanted to include this because this is probably my favorite photo that I've taken since I started. That's Principal Noriega from Monroe doing her Jog-a-thon event on a slip-and-slide. I just want to thank everyone here. This past year, working at Monrovia Unified has been such a blessing, and I love what I do every day, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Olgin. Are there questions or comments? Beritza?
Thank you, President Lockerbie. I think I'm like half the likes on social media, but I absolutely love what you're doing and where you're headed. Thank you for working on our main website and all the school sites. I mean, that is something that's been lacking for a while, so really appreciate your work there and everything that you're doing. These videos, they mean something to our staff. They mean something to our parents. You know, they, oh, wow, that's so-and-so, and it really engages our community, so thank you very much for all your efforts. And if you were around for promotions and graduations this past year, I've never seen someone zip around our community like Gustavo did. He hit every one, and every school was highlighted, and I really, really appreciated that extra effort on your part. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to echo what Mr. Vanti said because it's been an impressive display of what our schools have to offer, and thank you for that. I have a couple of quick questions.
Of course.
Social media performance on YouTube, watch time, almost 190 hours. That doesn't include school board meetings, right? Because ours are lengthy, and I'm hoping that's all...
Unfortunately, guys, you guys have a different YouTube channel than us.
Oh, no, that's good news. That's exactly what I'm hoping for, because school board meetings would eat up a big chunk of that time, so that's great news that we have 190, I'm sure, plus hours of social media videos out there in addition to school board meetings, so thank you. And this is my 10th year at MHS, and I've noticed as we redesign the website, this might be an opportunity to have photos that don't predate my children graduating. So that might be something that we can look into. You probably already are, but it would be wonderful to see some of those photos updated that people aren't saying, who is that? Well, okay, they graduated from college like three years ago, so if we can focus on that, when you get to that point, that would be marvelous. And then you mentioned, I don't know if you mentioned just with the website, but logos. I know that we have some very antiquated logos, and I think, Dr. Smith, you've been working on that a little bit with Gustavo as well. Are we going to have new logos to roll out with our website?
So with the redesign, it doesn't include logos and branding. I know the board agreed to have us update the district logo, and that's something that, now that our students are back in the classroom, we're going to resume. But for, to update all of our logos, that is a very lengthy process, and I would recommend reaching out to some sort of design agency to get that done. I spoke with VMA of what it would cost to get us just high-resolution logos, no updates, just high-resolution. It was around $5,500.
Yeah, because you can't get the high res. I've tried for years to get a high-resolution image, and we don't seem to have them. Is that something that we are looking into in the future, maybe updating them as well as providing high-res quality images?
Just to follow up and add to that, I think it would be a worthy investment to look at our school logos while keeping the spirit of our logos, obviously, and the rich tradition of them. I think it would be wise to have maybe somebody assist us with giving them a refresh or a fresher look, especially as we are rebranding our websites in general and things like that. With respect to the district-wide logo, as this board knows, we've had a logo in place for a while now, and I mentioned to the board back in late spring that we were interested in bringing you some options for a new district logo. And Dr. Puccia was quite helpful before he came onboard, actually, when he came onboard, with helping advance that, and we gave several options to the board. And the general consensus of the board was quite favorable around one of the logo options that essentially really showcased our historic and iconic is probably the better word, bell tower at the high school. And so the board seemed quite favorable to that, at least the majority did. And I think it would be, if the board chose for us to move forward with making that front and center as part of our new district website or rebrand, we'd be happy to move forward with that if it pleases the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of this, for your presentation, for all the work that you have done in this past year. It's quite amazing, really excited about it. Love to see the data so that we can get a pulse on things and see how effective the work that you're doing really, really is. I had a question. I love the little commercials that you're doing, and I had actually learned, right before we shut down for COVID in 2020, that you can buy commercial space in front of movies, the movie theater, and I would love for Dr. Smith, if you could look into that and give an update for the board on how that would work, how much that would cost, because you know, the commercials that you're doing are wonderful, and I'd love to see them have a broader audience and be able to bring in more people. So if you could give us an update on what that would cost, what it would look like to have us be able to put the commercials, the school commercials, or maybe create something different, a district commercial, that could go ahead of... Or maybe create something different, a district commercial that could go ahead of a movie in a movie theater?
Sure, we can look at that.
Thank you. Wonderful. Those are all of my comments. Just really thank you very much. Love the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And so we are moving on to our visual and performing arts presentation. Patrick Garcia, welcome. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
So much for having me. It's great to be here. So Board President Lockerbie, School Board, Dr. Smith and Executive Cabinet, I am delighted to be here tonight to talk to you about the visual and performing arts here in Monrovia Unified School District. And also to share some new ideas with you about ways that we can engage our students' creative imagination and also find ways of creating more opportunities for our students to shine and grow. Next slide. And that's because in Monrovia, we make the arts happen. So any arts program, you know, it is essential that you have a wonderful array of community partners. And I'm happy to say here in Monrovia that we do. If you look up and see all of those logos there, they represent organizations that help us with field trips, free tickets to performances, grant funding, donations and services. And so I just want to say that all of our community partners, you're extraordinary. Next slide. So tonight you will hear and see examples of how we provide excellent opportunities for our students to be a part of the visual and performing arts here in Monrovia. Okay, I'm going to start off with general music and we are so proud to be able to say that all 1,566 of our students in Monrovia that are TK to third grade have an opportunity to participate in general music during the school day. And this year we've got some exciting news. I've been working with Dr. Francois and we are talking about getting recorders for all third graders to be able to utilize during general music as a next step toward expanding what we're offering during the school day to our students. I think that's exciting stuff. Next slide. What?
I just want to be in the room when that happens.
Right? It's going to be amazing.
Please let us know.
We will absolutely bring them to a school board meeting. We will do that. So, so the other thing that's very, very exciting, in addition to the offerings that we have during the school day, we also offer music after school. And so we have an expansive fourth and fifth grade after school band and strings program. And I want to give a big shout out to our school board for last year. We had an extraordinary influx of new students who were excited about being a part of the band and strings program. And so the board approved me being able to buy quite a few additional instruments and books that were needed. We were expecting about 150 families to show up at our event last year. And we had probably 250 people show up at our event last year. So thank you so much for that. In addition to that, we also offer choir opportunities for our students in second, third, fourth and fifth grade. And if you just take a collection of all of the students that were involved in our programs last year, after school, it was about 200 students. So we were, we were happy with those numbers. Next slide. Okay, and now we move to secondary. And so I'm going to start off with Monrovia High School. At Monrovia High School, we offer symphonic band, marching band and color guard. We offer orchestra, choir and piano. And at Clifton Middle School and Santa Fe, they offer both beginning and intermediate, no, no, sorry, beginning and advanced band and strings. Clifton offers choir during the school day. And at Santa Fe, we are looking at offering choir after school this year. We're looking at options for that. And that's, that's kind of exciting stuff. But one of the other things that I wanted to mention is this year specifically, I'm going to be spending some time working with our secondary music teachers to help plan and develop ideas and to schedule workshops and ideas to be able to attend festivals and conferences and that kind of thing. So that all of the secondary music teachers can have that information. Speaking of festivals, I want to highlight one of our teachers. Tim Weed took our students last year to a festival called Music in the National, so Music in the Parks National Competition. And they had an awards ceremony at Knott's Berry Farm last year. And so I want to recognize the fact that our orchestra at Clifton was ranked superior and they took first place overall. The band also received a superior rating. And then the Clifton Band and Strings Program together got the Esprit de Corps Award. And that is for professionalism and school spirit. So that's kind of awesome, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, next slide. All right. So we also have an array of performance opportunities here in Monrovia. There are many, but I'm going to share four of them with you. First of all, we have December or winter concerts at all levels and those happen at a variety of different school sites. We also offer performance opportunities at Monrovia Days, which is in Library Park and that's in mid-May. Also, we have the Superstars of Monrovia Showcase. It used to be called Superstars of Music Showcase. The reason we changed it to Monrovia Showcase is because last year we started including our art students and our theater students in the performance. So it really is a district wide performance for all of our visual and performing arts students. And then finally, we also offer spring concerts in April and in May. Next slide. Okay, now this is one of my favorite things and I couldn't believe when I was putting this slide together. We have been doing Summer Music and Theater Institute now for 12 years. Can't believe it. But for those of you that are not familiar with it, it's a, it's a camp opportunity that we offer the week before school starts. Our students have an opportunity to work with vocal and instrumental music teachers. They do theater improvisation. They do music theory, rhythm, theater games, stage movement. This year we had 61 kids that participated. And what's great about it is the, the teachers who work with our kiddos are all of the teachers that are their Monrovia teachers that they're already very familiar with. So what it does for our kids is it gives them an opportunity to start thinking musically before school even starts, which I think is terrific. And the program, of course, is free of charge to our Monrovia students. And it was designed specifically for students entering fourth grade through entering eighth grade. Next slide. All right, this is another one of my favorite slides because we get to work with the Monrovia Dwardy Black Alumni Association here. This is our elementary art festival that we did last year. And that was Morgan Hogan, who was our fourth and fifth grade itinerant art teacher. So you can see here in the picture that the kids were sharing their art. We had, I think, 2,000 plus pieces of art up at the community center. It was an extraordinary event. One of the things that they do is they give out awards to the children that are attending, you know, depending on, you know, first, second and third place and that kind of thing per school. And so what that did is it brought out lots of families and lots of people. It was an extremely well attended event and something we were very, very excited about. I also want to mention something new that we're doing this year. We're working with Maritza Travanti, one of our board members. And the, I think it's called the Latino Heritage Society. Am I right? Yes.
Monrovia Latino Heritage Society.
Monrovia, yes. And so this year, mark your calendars, on September 18th, we are going to be hosting our first ever Hispanic Heritage Art Festival, which is going to feature fourth and fifth grade artists from all of our schools here in Monrovia. We're very excited about this. So that's a new thing and there will be more details to come on that. My assistant Jackie is working on a flyer for that right now. So we'll put that up in Parent Square soon. All right, next slide. And this is secondary art and I want to just highlight Clifton and Santa Fe, that at both of those schools, they offer art classes in drawing, painting and sculpting. Clifton also offers an art history class. And then at Monrovia High School, they offer drawing one and two. Gosh, my eyes. Okay, so that, that must be advanced. That must be advanced drawing, I think, and painting, AP drawing, beginning ceramics and intermediate ceramics. And I'm delighted this year that we hired a new ceramics teacher and she seems great. I also want to give a quick shout out to all of our secondary teachers because they were wonderful to be a part of our Monrovia Showcase that we do in May. And last year was the first year that they joined us with that. So it was wonderful to have them. Okay, next slide. This is another one of my favorite programs. It's called TEAL. And if you haven't heard me talk about this before, this is the arts integration piece and the partnership that we have with Laco. And so our students have an opportunity to work with their teachers. And their teachers get trained by these Laco professionals and teaching artists in how to integrate the arts into what we are doing during the school day. So whether that be with English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies or Science, our kids have an opportunity to sort of learn an art piece along with that, whether it be singing, dancing, drama, whatever it might be. The other thing that's great about this is that there is professional development that the teachers and the principals and myself are able to attend each year. Dr. Smith went to one of the trainings with us last year as well, which was great. The other piece is that we have opportunities to be able to work with a variety of teaching artists in the community. And, you know, that, that also is wonderful. There's another idea that I want to share with you a little later on. I guess the other thing that I should probably share too, is that TEAL also includes social emotional learning. And our elementary principals are also involved in attending trainings. And they work with our TEAL teachers and coaches at each site, giving them opportunities during staff meetings to be able to share like mini TEAL lessons so that, so that everybody on the staff sort of stays up to speed on, on what's going on. Next slide. This is another partnership that we have with the LA County Office of Education. This is called Promising Learners Project. And so this is a three-year grant that we received from Laco. This is $20,000 for three years. We are actually in year three right now and I love this because the slogan is every day matters. And so the whole piece here is that they are looking for ways for us to be able to engage our foster and homeless youth in TK to third grade. And we are one of only four schools, school districts in LA County that was asked to participate in this. So it's, it's kind of a big deal. Okay, next slide. And of course, you know, musical theater is near and dear to my heart. So I, you know, I love the fact that we have this slide up here and that there are so many musical theater productions. Even during all of the difficulty that we have had with COVID this year, all of these teachers and all of these folks have persevered to make sure that they could do a presentation. We even did Cinderella where the kids had masks on and they still rocked it. So I am, I am delighted that, that we have that kind of spirit here in Monrovia. All right, next slide. All right, I love this one. Let's hear it for the arts. We are looking forward to our fifth annual Performing Arts Gala, which we have scheduled for sometime in mid-March 2023. Our last gala was on June 24th and prior to that, we hadn't had a gala since before the pandemic. So our, our last year's gala was at the Historic Museum. It was a great night for us to come together as a community and to celebrate the performing arts here in Monrovia, to enjoy a meal together, listen to some student speeches and hear them sing some songs, as well as some of our professional actors that got up and sang as well. It was a lovely night. Next slide. Okay, now this is kind of exciting as well. So last year was our first ever Gate Extravaganza. And so this coming year, we have another one planned for Spring 2023. And of course, this is Monrovia, so we're already planning to make it bigger and better than the one we had last year. And so we've already got some ideas about how we're going to do that. What we know we're going to do is we're going to utilize some of our same partners that we utilized last year. We're going to bring out the Math and Science Academy people again, and our good friend Kristen Ford. But I'm delighted to announce tonight that we have a new community partner. So drumroll, please. All right, we are going to be partnering with Microsoft. So I am super excited about that and I want to give a huge shout out and thank you to Dr. Francois for creating that relationship, for introducing me to those folks and helping me to put that together. I am really excited about this. I spoke with the Microsoft people the other day. They are engaged and excited, not only to help us with the Gate Extravaganza, but a couple of other ideas that I mentioned to them. So super excited about that. Can, can you tell I'm excited about that? All right, all right, next slide. I'm supposed to keep this moving, right? All right. So I've got a list of five things here, but, but I want to just talk about two of them specifically because the other three I've sort of already mentioned. So the first thing there, I've got this idea. I want to utilize our TEAL coaches to do parent education nights at each of our elementary school sites. And basically what I would like them to do is to be able to go in and teach these arts integrated lessons, some of them to our parents, so that they have an opportunity to see the way that kids are learning in school. But I want to layer it so that there are performances, so that there are gallery walks, so that there are opportunities for our kids to have another showcase. So it's not just parent ed, it's going to be an opportunity for our kids to also showcase what they're doing. We make it kind of fun and exciting, get, get people to come out. So that's one idea. Okay, I've already talked a little bit about National Hispanic Heritage Month, so I'll move on with that one. The other thing that I'm excited about here is I want to strengthen the relationships between our two middle schools and the spring musical that we do. So I've been in conversation with both principals at both middle schools. I've been in conversation with many teachers at both middle schools about how we can create a musical that would be something that both schools could be involved in. And we could maybe look at ways to have the musical at Clifton one year, at Santa Fe the next year, maybe out in the amphitheater in front of the gymnasium, maybe have auditions at both schools. So both campuses have an opportunity to feel like they're able to fully participate. And so we've had some really great conversations about that and I think, I think we're going to, we're going to push the go button, button on that. So that's kind of exciting. I've already talked about gates. I've already talked about the recorders a little bit. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. There it is. So I just want to thank you all. As a board, you guys show up for all of these events. I see you and get a chance to talk to you at all of these. I'm so thankful and grateful. And Dr. Smith, you're always at these events as well. The arts is so near and dear to my heart. So I appreciate that it is to you also. And just on a personal note, I want to thank you for closing out that board meeting a couple of board meetings ago in honor of my mother. So thank you for that. And that is my presentation. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Patrick. Questions, comments?
Thank you so much, Patrick. All right, all right. Ms. Golar and I were, were on the same wavelength. Yeah. I'm so glad to hear about the future thinking in terms of bringing our middle schools together and producing a play that is a little bit more balanced in terms of participation from not only Clifton and Santa Fe, but then also from Mountain Park. That's another opportunity as well.
Absolutely.
So I'm eager and anxious to see that take place in a way that is accessible to all, that is a real sense of, of community building. And I think that would be just a fabulous way to help our middle school students build stronger relationships before they even get to MHS, right? Because they're all, we're all future Wildcats, right?
Exactly.
And, and just like, and I wanted to recognize, I lovingly call it band camp because whatever the title you have, I always forget.
You're like, it's band camp.
It is band camp. Band camp sounds a lot more fun. My children participated since, since the beginning, because I've had kids in band for a long time. And that program went a long way to helping kids feel confident and, and build relationships and comfort on a campus as they were getting ready to embark, particularly in middle school, because that's where, where those are held. So thank you for that.
Yeah, for sure.
The, the one thing that we haven't really touched on is that the choir program at Santa Fe is after school as opposed to
During the school day.
During the school day, which, you know, it might, might cause some problems for some families in terms of, of being able to, excuse me? Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Being able to participate.
And, and so that's something that I want to make sure that we are really cognizant of so that no one is left out as a result of this different programming at our two sites.
Yes.
You, you are always so eloquent. Do you have anything you want to add? Because I know you and I were both on the same page. Oh, it is not.
Of course.
We were passing notes, so excuse us.
During my presentation.
Sorry, teacher. But just that notion that these rich, wonderful experiences are available and accessible for all. are available and accessible for all. That's just critical in my heart, that if we are offering such wonderful programming and exposure to the arts, you know, educational research and literature that talks about what that does in terms of expanding the the mind, the brain, right? That that be afforded at both sites.
Thank you.
That's very important.
Thank you, thank you, yes. Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Garcia, for all of this information. It's it's really great to see how much we provide in terms of performing arts, art, all of it, art, music, all of these things. For our students, you hear anecdotally about other schools and other districts and other cities and other states that just, you know, there are no arts, the arts are going away, the arts are here. And I really appreciate your leadership and your your forward thinking to keep it strong and and engaged. Talking about being strong and being engaged, I appreciate the attention that you put into bringing music to our elementary students and strengthening that because, you know, we're all future Wildcats. So we want the the high school band. I get my kids get mad at me when I call it band and not orchestra. So band or orchestra, band or orchestra. We want that to be big and full
Absolutely.
of kids.
Robust.
Robust, thank you, good word. So we need to get the enthusiasm and the participation in at the elementary levels. So I appreciate you really, really focusing on that in terms of the music programs, because we need those bodies to the trajectory into middle school, both both middle schools, and then altogether into the high school. So we need to have those bodies and and have that passion, that seed planted in the very beginning. You mentioned the Clifton Music in the Park at Knott's Berry Farm. I was actually there.
You were?
Those kids lost their minds when it was announced that they had won all of these things. It was so touching to see how just mind-blown they were at that recognition and that all all of those kudos go, of course, to the kids.
Yeah.
But a big thank you to Mr. Weed for putting that together.
He called me that day because he was very excited about it too. So I got this crazy call from him, like, we just won. Oh, my God, you can't believe this. So, anyway.
It was very exciting. Those were my only comments, then not even really questions, just comments. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and now we're moving on to the presentation on summer school. Dr. Francois is already ready. Thank you.
President Lockerbie, members of the board, Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, and guests. So I want to say thank you so much for the opportunities to give a brief recap of summer school. And this being my first time getting a chance to observe summer school, the thing that I took away was pride and passion. Instruction did not miss a beat being summer. So I'd like to first start off in saying a big thank you to all of our teachers and all of our classified staff for giving up their time during the summer to pour into the lives of our kids. Definitely, definitely very impressed with what I saw for this summer. Next slide. So our focus for summer school centered on a couple of things. For elementary, it's intervention and enrichment. For secondary, similar, but also throwing in credit recovery to ensure our students are on track for graduation, as well as ESY, which stands for Extended School Year. So we're meeting the needs of the IEP of students with special needs. Next slide. This highlights a breakdown in locations where summer school was was being held. And you see, we had over 1,359 students serviced this summer. Next slide. One of the things, as I talked about, that pride and passion, each of our sites had a unique feel to it. And it's a real testament to our site leads during the summer. So I'll first start off with Mayflower. And so we had Sharon Nagle and Caitlin McDonald serving there as enthusiastic leads, providing the students a really awesome experience. And so there at Mayflower, they had three main programs. Junior Camp Readalot, which assists and supports students in first through third grade, working on phonics and letter recognition support. Camp Readalot for fourth and fifth graders for beginning reading comprehension skills. And Camp Infinity for fourth and fifth grade math concepts and number sense. So one thing that's really unique, just speaking of starting off with Mayflower, is they not only took care of the kids' instructional needs in class, they made it fun. And so here in this picture, you see one example of themed days. So this happened to be red, white, and blue themed day taking place at summer school. So a great way of looking at engaging the kids in the learning, but also making it fun. Next slide. So we have some some data to share with you. So for Junior Camp Readalot, so once again, this is our second and third graders. We saw growth with both grade spans. And so they take a pre and post test. So like I said, so got an opportunity to visit all of our sites. High-quality instruction was alive and well at all of them. And it wasn't just about instruction. Once again, they looked at that social emotional support, bringing in positive behavior and interventions along with the structured guiding reading practices. Next slide. For Camp Readalot also showed growth amongst both grades, fourth and fifth graders, with a similar model focused on the social emotional as well as high-quality instruction as well. Next slide. So for Camp Infinity, looking at the math needs, we also saw growth with this group as well, with them taking a pre and post test. Next slide. So moving over to Monroe and Santa Fe, once again, high-quality instruction on display, supporting students in our Dual Immersion Program, with Spanish being supported at Monroe as well as Mandarin. And those two having themed days, I saw our superhero day. Farley Galindo did an awesome job being the site lead over there for Santa Fe. We had Robin Kika. And also, and as we had the upper grade Mandarin there being supported as well. And so at both, we saw pride and passion. We saw high-quality instruction, and we also seen kids being supported and also being treated to unique treats as well. And so whether it was fresh fruit there at Santa Fe, or whether it was a popsicle treat at Monroe for the hard-working students on those hot days. Really awesome to see the kids engaged in the learning. Next slide. So for Monroe, we saw growth in each of the the key elements they focus on, with Spanish letter recognition, sounds, as well as oral comprehension, looking at our first graders. Next slide. For second grade, we saw growth as well, looking at our pre and post measures, the focus on the words per minute, and also comprehension, the number of questions students got correct. Next slide. For our Spanish Dual Immersion for third through sixth, we also saw and we saw increase in achievement as well with words per minute for third and fourth, fifth, as well as sixth. Looking at the the assessment they took was the reading comprehension, reading A through Z. Next slide. So our Dual Immersion Mandarin took a unique approach, looking at focus areas on units, high-interest topics that the students would would engage themselves in hands-on. So there were use, you saw use of manipulatives. You saw individual students working with professionals and the teacher. You saw whole-group instruction, small group. So they used so many different strategies to work to meet the needs of the kids. It was awesome to see. Next slide. For our Middle School Bridge Program, we did something slightly different that we've done in the past. So we did continue to have guided reading lessons, informational texts, writing and speaking. But one thing we did this year, we added in some STEM. So the unique thing about this, these are students who their elective would be ELD. And so with that being a place, you know, with that being a set place in their schedule, typically, there's no other opportunity for them to get an other type of elective of their interest. So I'm really, really happy that for this summer, we had Mrs. Madison on board there at Santa Fe that offered us our students an experience with STEM through the Paxton Patterson Lab there at Santa Fe. So the kids got a chance to get that experience. And it was really awesome going to see and her, you know, it was like young engineers, young scientists, you know, going through that productive struggle with the goal of building a rocket. And so one of the culminating activities, what you see right there are the the proud rocket winners. So they launched rockets that last day. So it was great to see our kids providing that opportunity, and they they really shined with it. It's something we we want to be very mindful about that in the near future. Next slide. Our high school summer program, so once again, original credit and some instances of credit recovery as well across Mountain Park, through independent study, MHS, as well as we have Citrus College-sponsored courses. And we have Citrus College, early college program as well. Next slide. So here, we just want to highlight some of the courses that were listed and that credit recovery. And so we had a large number of students that were engaged in session one as well as session two, equivalent to a semester one course and a semester two course that you would see in a traditional high school year. So average pass rate 88% for session one, session two, 88, 87%. Next slide. There are hybrid population through independent study courses listed. And here we had students engaged through our online platform called Edge Newity. And so here, we had quite a few number of students engaged in this. And the pass rates is 100% across the board, which is really, really amazing. Next slide. So we also offered original credit for students in our master program in chemistry honors and significant pass rate, 100% first semester, and almost at 100% for that that second semester. But high-quality instruction, pride and passion on display with our teachers as well. So for early college online, so the cohort keeps on moving forward, students did quite well, 93% earning passing rates in the courses that you see listed. Next slide. So as Patrick got a chance to share, we also offered enrichment throughout our district. At Mayflower, Monroe, Clifton, Santa Fe, as well as MHS, with the piano lab for students had a chance to earn original credit. We offered a college course through art history as well. And so another opportunity for kids to be engaged in schools. And our art offerings at the elementary middle, they took place in the afternoon. So if students needed a course or want to be involved with traditional summer school in the morning, they could stay and get art after the the lunch period, which was great to see. Next slide. So for summer school, our next steps. So one of the things we saw was a is a key need is we have not offered math support for students at our entry levels. So looking at first through third grade, looking at some of our math needs and putting some in place to support them for next year. Also, something that we we want to explore is incorporating a bridge program. We have transition grades. What are some things that we can do to set the students up for success as they move on and advance to those other grades? So the incoming sixth graders and incoming ninth graders in particular. So explore the the implementation and what a summer bridge program would look like. With our success, enthusiasm there at Santa Fe, we want to definitely expand our STEM offerings. As well as with us launching Femineres this year, why not offer a Femineres Summer Camp? So we have some ideas that we we want to continue to talk about through Executive Cabinet and look at bringing some some really amazing hands-on opportunities for kids in future summers. Also, we want to look at expanding dual enrollment opportunities for kids, for them to have a chance to take college classes earlier on in courses that they are they are interested in. The last one, we look to expand district-run summer school. So in the past, Citrus College has been a great support of us getting our summer school off the ground. And so one of the things we want to consider is, are we at a place to move in our own direction to run our own summer school and look at things maybe a little bit differently? So one of the benefits that that happened, where I got a chance to visit all of our summer school campuses, I informally polled teachers and talked to them. What are some things that went well? What are some things that if they had an opportunity to change? What suggestions do they have? So one of the things that that stood out, that was a trend across the groups I spoke to, was they talked about exploring the idea of a four-day-a-week summer school instead of a five. And some of the things they said we might consider is, so one, we could extend our time to go a little bit longer during the day, but you know, but maybe not not have a particular class on a Monday or a Friday. And that might be a way that we might get even more teachers engaged, as well as a battle that we we fight a lot with summer school is parents want to pull their kids out for vacations, extended weekends. So this might serve another benefit for us to keep our kids enrolled, engaged. So something that we'll we'll explore. But these are our next steps. Just want to thank the board for for your support. Pride and passion was alive and well this past summer, and it was a great lead-in for this upcoming school year. And I can't wait for this next summer. It'll be even better than this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Francois. Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. I want to thank you for, I'm gonna start at the beginning. I've been trying to get enrichment summer school for years, and you finally have done it. I want to thank you and thank you and thank you. It opens up opportunities and possibilities to our students, and it gives them options as a particularly in the secondary schools for the electives that you spoke about. I think one of the ways that we can help Patrick's programs is by offering the enrichment program in the summer, which opens up the possibility of taking the the music classes in the secondary program, in the secondary education. The thing I'm really interested in is you had a slide in there, and it was on the early grades. And it had the students who were in the English. But I'd like to know, and there's a vast number of students, is we know who the students are that came into summer school. What I'm really interested in is knowing for the kids who took summer school and then came back in next for our new semester now, at the end of this semester coming up, did they get the summer slide? Or did we cut it off because they came to summer school? That is a something I'd really like to know. If by, if we can quantify that, we can get that information out into the community to say, if your child and you have and your family has time, if you're able to attend summer school, you can keep them at the level they are, and they won't have the, they don't have to start back and get relearn something the next semester. I would really like to be able to quantify if that happens or not. So we know who the kids were that came to summer school.
Yes.
Can we look and see how they do in their proficiency the first semester and see if it keeps pace with what they had at the end of the second semester last year? Hopefully, it would go up. But I would like to know that information. That might be a very telling number. And you called it a bridge, and I love the word. The promoting the bridge between the sixth grade and the ninth grade. And if we can get to our eighth-grade students and show them that particularly going into the arts programs like band, if if you want to be in band, take the enrichment in the high school, and it opens up the possibility for you to do that. I think we really need to market that. That was the the whole drive of getting enrichment so that the students could have options when they got particularly to high school. Thank you very much. I and thank all the teachers that showed up and taught. I know that it's it's a hard job going from August to June. And for those that came around and then worked from June, the rest of June and July, I thank you, and I know that our students are the better for it.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. In addition to what Mr. Hammond said, I want to thank Mrs. Madison particularly for ensuring that the kids that don't often get electives at EL, in EL classes, had that opportunity this summer. That's really, really significant. And I'm really proud of our our district and our program for making that happen, as well as for Mrs. Madison for dedicating her time. And I'm sure there are a lot of other teachers that did the same. You just happened to mention her name, so I I knew to to call her out. And then also for the the AM, PM schedule, where in the mornings, they would learn the more core curriculum and then have enrichment in the afternoon for the elementary schools. That is really critical to helping keeping kids engaged. And once again, I want to And once again, I want to thank you for doing that. It really enhances our summer school programs. It makes school, um, a much more enjoyable place to be in the summer after they've had a whole long year like we all have and, and that's really, really beneficial to our students. And then also for your foresight in the next steps, particularly, uh, the expansion to address the math needs in our early grades. If we can catch them early, hopefully it will make, um, it a little easier as we go further down the road. And as Mr. Hammond said, that the bridge program for incoming sixth and ninth graders is huge and that's a really insightful piece that we can, we can capitalize on. We have so many programs already in place that we can help build a stronger bridge program, um, or to build a bridge program, I should say. And so thank you for, for looking forward to that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
I wanted, uh, thank you for this presentation and appreciate it and reiterate what Mr. Hammond said. Can you please let us know for the public, for our public meeting, how you identify kids that are invited into Camp Infinity and Camp Read a Lot and how kids are invited into Junior Camp Read a Lot and Junior Camp Infinity?
Definitely. So the students are identified based upon achievement. And so whether it's S back scores, whether it's benchmark, benchmark scores, um, and, and also teacher recommendation is, you know, the way that our students are identified. And so once students are identified, they have all been invited to participate and then we have a registration process to get them signed up to attend. So it's based upon data.
Thank you. Can you tell us, are there any students that are invited that don't attend?
Yes, definitely. That does occur and sometimes it's, it's due to planned vacations, um, for various reasons. So yes, that does happen.
Um, do we provide busing for summer school?
So this, this past summer, we, we did not offer summer school. Uh, we did not offer busing for summer school. However, we did communicate with all principals to be aware of anyone that may need it and we reached out to, to them on a couple of occasions. Um, and there hadn't been any that expressed the need for transportation.
That's wonderful. I appreciate that. Um, can you tell us when, what were the times for the camp and junior camp Infinity and Read a Lot in terms of, um, how long was the day and how long was the program?
Definitely. So the, the entire program was a five week summer school program that ran Monday through Friday. And so they were in class for approximately four hours, so approximately eight to 12 time. So each school had a different slightly start and end time, but approximate, approximate time was four hours.
So I'm curious, Ms. Becerra, if you could go back to the slide, um, towards the, uh, like the middle, middle end, um, high school courses, Citrus College and Mountain Park in person and hybrid independent study. Yes, the, uh, no, yes, that one and the one I think before it or right after it, that one. So do you have, so it's similar courses. It's English one and two, biology, US history. I'm wondering if you have had an opportunity to determine what the difference in the pass rates were? Because Mountain Park in person and hybrid had a hundred percent pass rate and the high school Citrus College one had 82, 87%.
One of the things I, when I see this, the thing that come about is something we'd like to do for, for next year is maybe just incorporate, uh, end of course survey for kids to get their perspective and, and what was different for them. So I know it was a different, um, platform, um, but at this point I have not had a chance to, to get, um, commentary from students or staff on this one, not yet, but I will.
Wonderful. And please share it with us because I, it's an interesting statistic and I just, you know, seeing that 100% pass rate is a great thing and if we can, um, have that applied everywhere, of course, that's hugely successful. Uh, you use the word bridging a lot and that's something that I'm always, um, interested in and making sure that, you know, we bridge in between all of the milestone schools. Communication out to parents, um, is vital and I see that as something that we could reinforce and continue to improve for next year is, um, having the information, the information sooner, um, and just, you know, really get that information out, what's available, when it's available, what to do, where to go, how to do it, the timings. There's a lot of information out there and, um, even for parents with high school students that have been in the district for 11 or 12 years, they're not new to this whole process, but they're new to being in high school. So, um, there still needs to be strong communication for that. Or the same thing for, you know, being in, starting in middle school, you're not new to the district, but middle school is different than elementary school. So that's one thing that I see as, um, being something to, um, to look at for next year. Those are my only comments. Ms. Golar?
Again, echoing all of the sentiment of the wonderful offerings that were available for, uh, our students at all levels from, um, the early elementary grade all the way through to the senior year because they could do the early college. I think that our literacy partner, the Monrovia Reads organization would be very interested in getting the, the data with regards to Camp Read a Lot. They're, they're gonna start hounding you for it. So just a heads up that they, they are always very, uh, interested in getting that feedback because I think they do a lot to supply the, the, the books that the students utilize in Camp Read a Lot. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
If I may. Thank you for this, uh, comprehensive report on summer school. One question on, um, location of next year's summer school for elementary level. Has that been discussed yet or determined?
Not as of yet.
Okay. I'm hoping it's a, a much more central location. I know that there is a rotation. I don't doubt that you reached out to our elementary schools about the transportation piece, but I suspect without us advertising that there will be transportation from especially our southern end of our town. They may look at the parent square flyer about summer school and see that it's on the north end and not even think twice about having their kid enrolled. So I think that, um, a, a location is really key here for our youngers especially. So, um, if you can take that into consideration next year and then plan for transportation for our elementary students. And then the other thing I wanted to, um, make note that, like Jennifer Anderson mentioned about, uh, the English learners and how they lose out, um, that hits home with me. I was one of those students. I started school kindergarten, first grade as one of those English learners and I had to leave the classroom and I didn't get to do the art projects or the music or the special reading, um, because I was busy learning English. So things like that, that we do to make sure that education opportunities are, are equitable are so important. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Francois, for, uh, this extensive in-depth presentation. I appreciate your time with it. Moving on to item, I consent agenda, routine items of business placed on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by members of the staff and will be acted upon by the board with one motion. Since there are no changes in the order of business, I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second is there discussion? Ms. Becerra, would you kindly call the roll?
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Yes.
Your pardon, we're moving on to our, um, action items and starting with Ed Services, number one agreement with food ed. Dr. Francois.
Thank you. The Board of Education is requested to approve an agreement with food ed for an in-person steam garden and food science program at each of the five elementary sites for the 22, 23 school year. Monrovia Unified School District is requesting to implement the Garden Explorer TK through third and Eco Solver fourth and fifth programs of food ed. The outdoor learning programs will follow necessary next generation science standards and steam pedagogies for each grade while adding more complexity each year. The interdisciplinary garden-based education programs allow students to learn about gardening, healthy eating, nutrition, environmental stewardship and innovation through hands-on lessons. At this time, I would like to call up Kristin Ratao to provide some context for this item.
Board president, Celine Lockerbie, board members, executive cabinet. It's very nice to see all of you this evening and thank you for everything you do for our community. Um, I am honored and privileged and a little tired. You guys run marathons at these meetings, so hopefully I'm still articulate at 8:15. Um, yeah, but thank you so much just for your continued support of our program. Um, not only am I running this nonprofit, but I'm a parent and I'm also a adult school student, so I attended the ceramics school. So, um, I've experienced a great swath of what's happening in MUSD and I'm a proud, proud, proud Monrobian of many years now. So just wanted to say thank you for that and, um, give you a preview of what's going to happen in our school gardens this year. We're so honored to be invited, um, really by Greg Jarreau to launch this at all five schools in collaboration with all of our elementary school principals. Um, we could not be more honored after having a major success last year at the three school, elementary schools we were at. And then shortly we're entering into, you're gonna see a lot of proposals coming across your desks. We're gonna be at all of the schools shortly. So, um, we're excited to enter into those partnerships. Um, we've got some exciting things in the pipeline and one of those that I wanted to feature tonight and why I was invited up is to let you know about our volunteer program. Um, we've got a new staff member, Rachel, who's Lily's mom, I think is what she would want to be known as. Uh, she's our new volunteer coordinator and we got a great grant from the governor's office to run this event. And so it's our school and community garden green care day. Um, we're really excited about this opportunity. It's gonna bring a lot of press to Monrovia. We've been in talks with the executive cabinet about it, um, reached out to some of you about it. I have some flyers that I'll leave with you tonight about it. Uh, many of you have already been at our volunteer days, so many of you have participated in different events that we've done, have liked our Facebook posts and, um, Instagram posts and shared those with the community and we could not be more proud to be in partnership with not only our schools, but with all of you. So thank you so much and, um, I'm happy to answer any question. I don't know if that's appropriate. I don't know the rules about what we've got on the docket this year. It's quite extensive as Dr. Smith can attest to after our meeting yesterday. So, um, but just wanted to let you know about this event. It will be at mostly all of our schools. If it's, if there's not a school featured that day, they will be on something like Make a Difference Day or a different volunteer day. So every school will get a volunteer day for sure, but we'll have the bulk of them on this day on September 24th.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ratao?
Beg your pardon?
Questions for Kristin or for the item? All, all in one?
I don't have a question necessarily. Was hoping Oakley was gonna be here tonight too.
Sorry, Oakley's watching at home, so everybody can wave at Oakley. I do know that because Gio's been texting me, so.
Yeah, I've been following, as you probably know, your Facebook and Instagram posts and, and all the projects that you've been doing with our, um, children. Again, that equity piece, that's so important for children that live in apartment buildings or condos or townhouses. They don't get the chance to learn about gardening and what grows in our environment and planting a tree. Um, I attended some planting of trees over at Brad Hoakes and, I mean, that is so important and they learn, you know? And, um, hopefully, you know, when they grow up, then they can kind of teach that too and incorporate that in their lives. And so what you do is really important. So I appreciate food ed.
I just, um, I just want to make some comments and that I'm really excited that, um, we're expanding with you with food ed. It gives a uniformity, um, for everyone in our district, so all of our schools have the same, um, access, the same teaching, the same training, the same understandings, um, collaborating. Everyone's on the same page. That's very supportive and makes it a, a stronger, um, program at the individual site because it's stronger, uh, throughout the whole district. Um, I have noticed in my life, the, um, difference in enthusiasm, um, children eating vegetables when they grow them versus when, you know, they buy it from the store or they're, or it's thrust upon them or forced upon them. And I even recently took some homegrown tomatoes to my adult boss at work and he thought it was weird that I was bringing him some tomatoes and the next day he said, wow, those tomatoes, they were so different, they were so great. So it really is, um, so important to introduce, um, kids to this, um, right from the beginning. So I appreciate the, um, collaboration that we've been able to have with you. It's an honor for me to be able to be, uh, have us be in this partnership. Um, I had a question and I was talking so much that I, I just forgot it. I apologize. Uh, do we have any more questions or comments? So I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Ms. Becerra, will you please call for the vote?
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. for being here tonight. I know what I was going to ask. No, you can stay. Will you have these flyers? Cause I snuck one and, uh, Ms. Golar says, why didn't I get one? That's wonderful. And also, Dr. Smith, um, could you make sure that this is, um, pushed out? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. There we go. All right, moving on to the next item, district membership with Mystery Science. Dr. Francois.
Thank you. The Board of Education is requested to approve a quote from Mystery Science, a part of discovery education for the 22, 23 school year. District membership is valid through June 30th, 2023. Mystery Science features ready to teach multimedia science and STEM lessons for K5 students. Each lesson begins by posing a question commonly asked by elementary aged students, which is followed by a series of brief videos and prompts used to guide class discussion. Through hands-on science and engineering, engineering activities, Mystery Science makes certain, makes science fun to learn, easy to teach and memorable for all students in each of our five elementary schools.
Thank you, Dr. Questions? I have some questions. So this is, this is a program?
So at this point, we're going to bring up, uh, Dr. Jarreau. So at this point, we're going to bring up Dr. Jarreau to go in and fill your questions.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Lockerbie, board members, members of the cabinet. So it's a supplemental program. So we have a science program, but it provides additional activities. They have an array to choose from. Some of them are five minutes, really highly engaging, short-term activities for kids or those more extensive ones that build upon what they're learning in the core curriculum.
Does anyone within the district have experience using Mystery Science?
We do. We've had, it's been, there's been usage at least as far back as 2016, but it's been sporadic, but it's been more and more popular, I think, especially during distance learning. More teachers found out about it. And so I heard from many teachers and administrators that this is something that was really valuable when they wanted to expand and make it more available to all students.
So you have heard that from our teachers that this is a want. They want this.
Yep, they made it very clear.
And this membership, but this is an annual membership?
Yes.
And this cost that is on the budget implication is for all five elementary school sites? I see that, yes. Those are my questions. Any other questions? Move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Ms. Becero, would you call for the vote, please?
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, doctors. Moving on to item three, Elevo, 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 Elevo? Vía Alegre! Elevo? I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Consultant agreement for Village Extended School Programs.
Thank you. The Board of Education is requested to approve a consultant agreement with Elevo for the Village Extended School Programs. The Village Extended School Program has reached enrollment capacity for the before and after school programs. All Village sites are carrying a waitlist with over 160 students desiring enrollment in the program. The Village Extended School Program is seeking additional staff in order to enroll waitlisted students. Currently, the Village program has 10 open actively leader positions that need to be filled. The contract with Elevo is for 7,515 hours, which covers the duration of the 2223 school year. The contract with Elevo covers the cost of recruiting, interviewing, background checks, training, onboarding, salary and benefits for up to 12 Elevo staff coaches. At this time, I would like to bring up Tom McFadden and Shane Shermans to share some additional information.
Thank you, Dr. Francois. Board president Lockerbie, members of the school board, superintendent Smith, and members of cabinet, we are just grateful to be able to bring some information and a proposal to meet some needs in the Village program. As Dr. Francois pointed out, we have an unprecedented need at the moment to be able to serve our students that want and need space in the Village Extended School Programs. So this is my new best friend, Shane Shermans from Elevo, which you said correctly, very good. So we're going to go through some of the slides and then, of course, we'll be answering questions as we go along. So to give us some context for the staffing needs for the Village program, our model is that we have our site staffed with a site manager and an activity leader, which are MUSD employees. Grant mandates that we have supervision ratios of one adult per 20 students. ELOP mandates an additional ratio of one adult to 10 students that are in the TK KH group. We're utilizing right now classified staff. We're thankful for them to come aboard with us in other positions in the district to help us with the after-school supervision gap. As was mentioned, our activity leader position has had a continuous posting on Ed joint for the last year yielding one applicant. So we have extraordinary need in terms of enrollment registrations. That's been higher than ever with less staff available to serve those students, which is creating the capacity need at this time. Next slide, please. So this is our current enrollment capacity and waitlist. As was mentioned, all of our sites are at capacity. All of our sites carry a waitlist in the after-school program except for Clifton, but they're at capacity with 40 students. We have capacity for, for 40 students, so they'll be, the next person that registers at Clifton, they'll go on the waitlist as well. So currently, we have 380 students enrolled in the program. We have capacity for 380 students in our after-school program. We have currently 180 students waiting on the waitlist with some very passionate parents, which, which we want to be able to serve them as soon as possible. And then in the, in the column with number of staff at 16, that is 16 staff between Village and our classified staff that are helping us with our supervision. So, and to be able to meet the, the additional waitlisted students is the last column to the right additional number of students, additional number of staff that is needed to serve those number of students. So for example, Brad Oaks, which is at 60 students right now, 26 are on the waitlist. We have two staff. We would need two more staff to be able to meet the, the need of supervision. Monroe and Plymouth, 51 students, 65 students respectively. And again, three more staff at each site is needed to meet that, to meet that need. Wild Rose has 29 students on the waitlist. We have some additional classified staff that's helping us out over at Wild Rose, so an additional staff member, one additional staff member is needed at Wild Rose. Clifton, we have two existing staff members. We need another one. And Santa Fe, same, same situation. We have two staff members now. We need another two to service the 40 plus the nine that are on the waitlist. And to make matters more interesting, we've heard of two other existing staff that may be leaving us to take a full-time position somewhere else. So it's, it's a fluid situation as we move forward. Next slide, please. So Elevo introduction and overview, this is actually not the first time that we have looking to contract with Elevo. We, we had a contract with the Village program with Elevo a few years ago when I was coordinating the program and when Patrick was coordinating the program. At that time, they were known as coast-to-coast soccer. So this is not the first time we have sought some, some staffing solutions with them. So at this point, I'm going to let our, my new best friend Shane talk to us a little bit about Elevo and then we'll go on from there.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much, Tom. Thank you, everyone, for having me to be here today. Board president Lockerbie, school board, superintendent Smith, executive cabinet. My name's Shane Shermans. I'm a regional vice president. I've been with the company for over 10 years. I also have a colleague of mine here, Judd Roland, who actually lives a little less than a mile down the street, so one of your own. We both will be looking after our partnership here. So yeah, just a little bit in terms of information on the program. We have been around for about 17 years supporting school districts throughout California in a variety of ways, but over the last five years, we have honed in on exactly what we do and the best way that we do it. And what that is, is we've developed a network of relationships with colleges and universities throughout the state where we are able to recruit in large quantities, basically near-peer mentors that we hire and train in our program, which is a blend of social emotional learning and physical activity or movement. And so these near-peer mentors serve as coaches. We call them coaches, the kids call them coaches, and they go onsite to support school districts in a variety of ways. So it can be recess, lunch recess, teacher release, you know, anything really is that's necessary, but a large piece of that for a very long time has been after-school support, summer school support. And so it's really kind of, you know, a home base for us providing these kind of programs. As you can see there, 17 years, 130 districts, 1,400-plus schools. The curriculum that the coaches are working on is one that we take a lot of pride in. We have spent many years working with countless individuals, Stanford professors, child psychologists, as well as our own full-time in-house team, developing a program that just a couple months ago received WASC accreditation, which I had absolutely nothing to do with, but there was people in our company who worked very hard for a very long time to achieve that. And so it's something that all of us at Elevo are, are very proud of. I, I know I went a little bit all over the bullet points there, but I think I covered everything on this slide. So there we go, perfect. Is this you or me? Okay, perfect.
So Elevo, we, we took a look at Elevo for a couple of different reasons. One is they have a strong reputation for providing high-quality staff. As was mentioned, near-peer mentors is really important to the youth that they'd be serving. So having recent college graduates work with our students gives the students a quality person that, that can lead them in the instruction that we do in after-school. As Shane mentioned, we, we took a look at how they get these people, because obviously we are challenged with getting some people, which is why we're having the discussion. So the, the process that Elevo uses to recruit, vet, train, onboard, and place their coaches in after-school programs throughout Los Angeles and county and the state is really top-notch. I actually reached out to some of the districts that are using Elevo services, heard directly from Rosemead, Ballpark, and Laywood. They all had positive things to say and had a good experience with their students and staff and families in, in the communities that they serve. So that was one of the, several of the reasons why we took a look at bringing, partnering with Elevo. Next slide, please. So Shane's going to cover a couple of these slides and then we'll wrap it up here. So there are some frequently asked questions, some questions I was asking through the process that I asked Shane to share with the community, because they may be asking the same questions that we did, so.
Yeah, so Tom mentioned there, obviously, you know, the, the, the big question is, how do we find the people when especially we're in, over the last couple of years, a period where staffing is a massive, massive need across the state? And the main reason is, is that we have, as we've been able to grow, we really have reinvested back in the operational needs of our company to be able to meet the requested needs of districts that we work with. So we have about 70 full-time people who their sole responsibility every day is to find, recruit, interview, hire, train, onboard, and process. And it is not an easy undertaking, especially because they are either current or recently graduated college students, so they're in their twenties. And so you kind of have to go through large quantities of candidates, really connect and figure out, are you a right fit? Are you going to be a good fit working with students? Are you responsible and reliable? And should we hire and staff you and put the time into training you? And at the end of the day, it really is just, it's a numbers game. And unfortunately, a lot of districts that we support, rightfully so, don't have 70 people to dedicate towards doing this. And so we're able to not only find those people and recruit them and train them, but we also have a full-time operational team that is dedicated to the oversight of our coaches and to the quality of the program once it, once the partnership gets up and running. So the secondary question there is, Elevo has 100% confidence in the ability to place 12 highly qualified coaches. We 100% have that confidence, but not only are we going to place those 12 coaches at your site, we keep a ratio of what we call floater coaches for any contract that we set up, and that's something that the company takes care of itself and it's really just a safety mechanism for when the program is up and running. So if we have 12 coaches, we'll actually place 16 throughout the district. And the reason for that, especially in the day and age we live in now, if there is a COVID close contact or someone needs to quarantine, but there's also the classics of car accident or, you know, family emergency, we are not going to have positions where I'm calling Tom and saying, hey, two people can't come today because we're already have four additional staff and we can just move them before the session even begins that day to the appropriate location to fill that need. And then if nobody does call out, we just have additional staff at school sites to help with ratios and additional support. It's something that we started doing about four years ago, even before the pandemic. And honestly, it's one of the most important things as a company that we invested in and one of the best decisions we made, because it massively changed the stability and quality of our program. In terms of the process for all of our coaches, we've sent and shared a couple affidavits with the district, ensuring that every staff member that works for us before they set foot on campus has passed live scan verification through the Department of Justice, as well as TB clearance by a medical professional. We have, we have all that data saved in-house and then the affidavit states that we've confirmed that before a coach ever goes onsite. On top of that, we follow whatever COVID protocols that the district mandates and however it changes throughout the year. I mean, obviously, over the last two years, those protocols changed mid-year. So we're in constant communication and following whatever guidelines the district would like us to take in that regard. In terms of the last piece, and it spoke a little bit to what was mentioned in terms of the ebbs and flows of this new ELOP support program. With the need or with the, the interest in signup of parents, the potential staffing needs for programs can fluctuate quite quickly. We have a contract in place currently with the Palmdale School District where we started with about 26 staff members and within one week of running the program, based off of parent interest, we had to add an additional 26 to that initial number. So we're now at 52 staff members because expectation of interest in the program, once the program actually got going, was wildly different and it's just kind of hard to gauge until something gets going. So we're going to have those 12 staff available for the district, but you know, rest assured if, if, if things take off or change and additional support is needed, you know, we'll be able to engage in a conversation about however many staff, you know, you might need.
Next slide, yes.
Oh, is this continuing? Perfect, perfect, perfect. I got, I got a few more for you. I think I skipped the last bullet point there, but that was just meant to say that for the contracts or the consultant agreement that's for this program, there's never any additional costs or fees that come with it. All equipment, all materials, all continuous training, you know, replacement coach, anything that is needed is built into that program price. So never, never anything additional that will come up. So yeah, we, we work with more than 80 districts. Yeah, we talked about screening and placing coaches throughout the duration. It's, it's, the importance of getting the specifics of the contract in advance is massive because the people that we place at the school, we want to ensure that they're going to be there for the length of the program. Developing, when we say near-peer mentors, it's, it's not just a phrase that we use. We really want at the end of the program to be able to engage with staff, even do student surveys and find out, did they make meaningful connection with our coaches? You know, did they, did the coaches learn the names and, and, you know, background of every single student that they're working with? Because in order to deliver social emotional learning programming efficiently and effectively, you have to know the person that you're, that you're engaging with. It can't just be words that you're saying. So it's something that we take quite seriously is wanting to ensure that there's quality and consistency of the people that we're placing. I covered a little bit already, you know, about replacement coaches, but if, for whatever reason, there's a coach that isn't living up to expectations, it's always the discretion of the district, what they would like to do in that scenario. We typically will offer a few suggestions, whether they think a coach just needs additional training or some retraining, or for some reason they think that that coach just won't work out even with additional retraining, we'll replace that coach right away. We're, you know, we always want to ensure that the school district is going to be happy with the work that we're putting out on the field. Yeah, and then Elevo will ensure the coaches connect and communicate with Village staff in a consistent and timely manner. We actually have a few full-time positions. One is called the Site Success Manager. There's a Regional Manager, as well as a Quality Assurance Coordinator. And all three of those positions are full-time positions that are positions that are, will be assigned to Monrovia for the success of this program. And they handle a few different things. The Site Success Manager is the direct contact for the schools and for the district. Quality Assurance Coordinators and Regional Managers look after the quality of the coaches and the actual programming that's taking place at the school sites. So they'll be out there throughout the course of the program, making sure that the curriculum and the games that we're playing with the kids are up to kind of the Alevo standard.
Next slide. So, next steps, if the contract were to get approved, would be for Alevo to implement and complete the recruitment, onboarding of the high-quality coaches that they've identified for our program. Our families that are on the waitlist would be notified that they will be enrolled upon the contract approval and given a start date. We would anticipate a start date of right around September 12th, do we talk, or September 12th to the week prior, we would have the coaches come out from Alevo to do some onboarding and meeting with the village staff at the sites. And then the Alevo coaches would do a physical walkthrough of their assigned village site prior to the start date. So, that would be the order of things, should the contract get approved. Okay, I think at this time, we'll open up to questions.
Thank you so much. You, I had two, and you answered one. What is the start date, or projected start date if this is approved? So thank you very much for that. The other was, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure, we will have zero on the waitlist once this goes into full effect. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Based on today's numbers.
Correct. Right. I understand that, you know, there might be fluctuation, and we can visit that if we need to. But this will zero us out as we stand now, so that nobody's waiting to get their kids into those programs.
I think the goal really is to service all the students that want and need to be in the program. And that's what we're, that's where the number 12 comes in.
Thank you. That's, that's exactly my goal. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Tom, there's going to be a number of them.
Yeah.
First of all, just for edification, a prerequisite to be in Village is that you are an enrolled MUSD student?
Correct.
So all the kids that are on the waitlist are in fact enrolled at MUSD?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. We have no students that are, because their parents are looking for after-school care?
Correct.
Okay. We're looking at bringing on 12 staff members for, well, we're contracting for, through the company, for 12 people. Not, they're not our staff, for $751,000?
I think the number went down to $700,000.
Okay. I'll have to redo my calculations, but that roughly about $62,000 a person. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what, that number divided by 12 is.
Right. What do we currently pay the folks that are working in your program?
And so our activity leaders make somewhere between $15 per hour and $19 per hour.
$15 an hour is $32,000 a year. I know that one off the top of my head. Okay. And that doesn't count the backend, which is another 30% for all your fees and everything like that. I'm not saying I don't like this. I'm saying that number is very large. A average work year is 2,000 hours. This equates to about 626 hours of employment. If you use an entire year, and we don't use an entire year, because we are only in operation for a little over nine months. And my question is, would we not be better off, I know that, I know what's happening out in the world and trying to find employees. I know how tough it is. But I'm wondering if we wouldn't be better off offering somebody $20 an hour to see what the market would bear in the world, instead of paying $30 an hour? Seems, it seems very expensive to me. Not that it's not very good. Okay? This is not a question of the service. It's the cost of the service. It also equates to about $4,175 for every person on a waitlist today, if you amortize it out. That also seems like an awful lot of money per person. If you took the cost of the entire program for the ones that we're serving, it, there's a gap about this big between what it costs us to service the kids we're doing right now, and then this cost. It's huge. And I just don't know, I'm not sold completely yet that this is the best use of those funds. I'm going to be sitting here listening to other people's questions, but I wanted to put that out right now, because it just seems very high. And I'm also interested if you can defend it. I'm okay with that. Because if you tell me you have the gold standard for after-school care, I'm very interested. But I do want to hear that. Justify this. It seems very high.
So I'll speak to part of it, and then Shane, Shane, you can speak to part of it. I know that with my job alikes throughout the county, there's, there's some districts that pay their after-school staff more money. $18 an hour, $20, $25 an hour, $30 an hour. We're all still having staffing challenges regardless of that income per hour. So that, that was one thing, that even the districts that are having their employees paid more, are still having staffing shortages. So I'm not sure myself, and I don't have the answer to this, but why, why is that? Why, why is, if a district is offering $25 an hour to their after-school staff, why are they not full with their staff? Or $30 an hour? So, I know that some districts are still struggling with that piece.
And I have a follow-up question. Your typical staff member works how many hours a day?
Three and a half, or 18.75.
So it's not a true $15 an hour on a full-time basis? That would be $32,000 a year. On a $15 an hour, it's $45 a day. Here's what I, another fear that I have. If we were to take this action, it becomes public record that we did it. It doesn't take a lot of steps to figure out that this person that's coming in to work alongside you is going to be making a tremendous amount of money more than what I'm making, and I gave you my blood, sweat, and tears and loyalty, and you're paying me $15 an hour. You're going to have a wage disparity that will create problems in your workforce. I know that happens. People are, people are people before anything else. And if you're working alongside a person who's making, I can't quickly do it how much a day it is, but it's close to $200, $300 a day, and I'm making $45 a day doing the same job, I'm going to go to that man looking for a job.
Yeah. I, I can, I can speak, if you don't mind. So, yeah, no, I mean, these are all the exact kind of questions that need to come up and need to be discussed. One thing is that the, the staff that are going to be working for us make between about $18 to $22 an hour. So, the amount that they're making doesn't, the, the cost of the program isn't directly just split up among them, because the main reason why, and it was what Tom was saying earlier, is that even if you move it to $20 an hour, or $30 an hour, and you just post it online, no one's still applying to those jobs, or they're not filling. At least that's what we're finding out. Like, I spoke to the 70 full-time staff people that are constantly recruiting. We have the relationships that we have at colleges and universities. We, the pandemic made it quite difficult, but we go physically on-site, and we spend hours making relationships with professors, and we go and present to large lecture halls, and we get 30 or 50 sign-ups at a time. And then we meticulously reach out to each of them three to five different times to follow up, to see who's interested, get them an initial five-minute FaceTime interview, then get them to do an online LMS training, then get them to a physical field where we can determine their quality, train them on our program, and then eventually hire them. So, and, and there are, we have 130 full-time operations people that oversee that process happening. So, I completely understand the math that, that you're doing. The, the problem is, is that there's a large portion of that, of that funding that takes you from posting a job for a certain dollar-per-hour wage, and then posting it and actually filling it, and making sure that they're never quitting or never stopping work. The other one is that that hour of work, three-hour positions are, as you can imagine, that much tougher to fill than an eight-hour position. We actually, a couple of years ago, used to run hour-long programs, and we had to scrap that as a company, because no one wanted to work only an hour a day. So we even now have a three-hour minimum in our, in our programming, because it literally became impossible to keep anyone employed at an hour a day. And so, 17 years of trial and error and best practices and processes is why I can stand in front of you and say, "We'll fill 12 people right now, and if this enrollment, you know, as Tom said, this zeros you out now. If another 80 parents want to enroll their students, you'll, then you'll need another six people." And to be able to say, "Yeah, we'll have that for you in two to three weeks," as opposed to, "Let's post again and see kind of how people apply, and try to hire them, and hope they don't quit, and if they do quit, who do we cover?" It's all those things that are really baked into that price. One thing I wanted to mention as well is that, over the past, I think like eight months now, when ELOP and the funding behind ELOP really became available, and people started learning and educating themselves about what was required for it, it was fascinating to see that in the language of the funding that was passed, it actually advocates for partnering with community partners and vendors and third-party people. And the funding that is allotted for this program was done in a way with that kind of directive, because I think there was an understanding that districts probably wouldn't be able to achieve this on their own. So, the, the funding that is going to be utilized, from what I've seen, it seems as if it's been laid out in this capacity specifically for this usage, because they anticipated these, you know, what we were dealing with, which was massive staffage shortages, and trying to figure out how we could use other people to, to help. So I don't know if that answers all your questions, but hopefully it's a little bit.
It does. And I, and I appreciate that. And I know the, the real-world circumstances of not being able to find employees. I've said in many meetings with Tom, when we were working with something with the city, trying to figure out how we could shorten up the, our inability to be able to service the children and that are our students that we want to be able to serve after-school. My concern here, and it has not been alleviated yet, is the high price of this. This is a very expensive program. And I am very well aware that when you hire temporary employees, it's almost always more expensive than if you're hiring permanent employees. I understand all these things. It, I have to be able to justify and articulate, and then defend the position I'm going to take if I, if I vote on this. And so far, I do not have enough ammunition or arrows in my quiver to be able to go out and use that, because there's a, a big gap that I can't justify yet. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
If I can maybe put one or two arrows in the quiver. One of them is for, for the idea of posting for a staff member, as opposed to who we are as a, as a company, that, that's one part of it, that is, is a large gap as well. I mentioned the WASC-accredited curriculum that we have, and kind of the oversight that we have. I, I don't want that, if, if, you know, I don't want it to get washed away by just saying, "Oh, well, why don't we just go grab a, a staff person?" Like, we take a lot of pride in the deliverables of the program as well. And so, I think, you know, the, the exposure of the program, and I know Tom talked with like Lynwood and Roseme and some of these other districts, like Baldwin Park, I mean, we did a, a board presentation video at the end of our Baldwin Park program, which I can probably talk to Baldwin Park and see if I can share with you, where people really spoke to the connection that our staff was making, the, the care that they took with the relationships they were building and forming, and the quality of the experience that they got. So, you know, that one's a little bit harder to put like a quantitative, like, you know, a, a relationship breach with a student is worth X amount of dollars. You know, that's a tough one to, to gauge, but it is something that lends itself to that, to that pricing. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and this speaks, and I mentioned Palmdale before, but there, we're doing the full ELOP program for them. So we're providing the site coordinator, all the staff for the entirety of the program. But they have two other partners that they've been in, working with. We've worked with Palmdale for four, five years, but they've worked with Boys and Girls Club and another organization, RISE, for over 20 years. And so we're working with six sites. Those organizations are working with the other 15. We've been running for the program for a couple of weeks, and we've already been given notice that one of the school sites that's under one of those two organizations needs to be handed over to us, because the amount of people that they need to have in terms of staff to run the program has gone past capability levels that they thought they were going to be able to handle and now can't. And so, we're, we're coming in to basically triage right now, and then get up fully, you know, running. And it's, it's hard to probably perfectly eloquently describe what kind of lift that is, and, and how much man-hour and effort goes through, you know, multiple different boots-on-the-ground staff level to be able to achieve that. But, but that really is where that, where that cost and that price consideration comes in. And, you know, it's, it's, it kind of looks like we're, we're saying, "Hey, you know, we'll snap our fingers and they'll be staffed there." But there's a massive undertaking that goes into it. And then there's, you know, kind of that, that cost that associates to that ability for us to achieve what no one else right now in the state is achieving at the, at the level and consistency and quality that we are, which is why we are partnering with so many more people than we ever have before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm struggling here, because obviously, there's a need. There are some families here that are experiencing some true hardships, because they're trying to work. They're trying to maintain a household, and they're worried about kids that may be home alone, when they really could use the help here in our schools for the after-school care. But I, the other struggle is the cost. This, is this 100% covered by that ELOP grant? 100% of it? And this is what it's earmarked for, for this type of program?
Ms. Travanti, if I may?
Yes.
Shane, I think, spoke to it quite well. I mean, the reason that districts were given ELOP grants was exactly for the purpose that we're bringing before you this evening. And the intention was to build programs, identify partnerships, and begin providing access to students that need it. And I think Shane articulated that particularly well. Ms. Smith, if I'm not mistaken, our ELOP funding for the year, is it upwards of $3 million?
2.8 million.
So $2.8 million. So, while the investment is large, and I understand the board's concern related to that, this is a partnership with an organization that's got an outstanding track record with providing supplemental after-school services. And that's why we've brought it before you today. But to your question, the purpose of that money is exactly this, and it would be covered entirely by that.
All right. Thank you. Tom, have you had discussions with your employees in regards to this contract? And what, what has been their thoughts on this?
Yeah, so we, we've, I've alerted Village, well, they're fully aware that we need more staff, because they're, they're feeling the struggle of, of trying to piece together the supervision that's going on as we speak. They would appreciate some help in providing that care, that supervision, or that more adult boots-on-the-ground for our, for our students. I've not had any feedback from them in regards to, you know, who the company is, how much do they get paid, how much do we get paid, you know, those kind of conversations have not come up. All the conversations have centered on, how can we get some help in what we're doing, and how can we serve more families, more kids?
Okay. Thank you. And there is, Village is fee-based. It's a nominal fee. Would these additional 180 students then have that same fee as all the other parents that are currently?
The unduplicated students that we pull in off the waitlist would never, never pay.
They do not.
They do not. They, they are not right now, and they will not with, with, with the waitlisted students.
All right. So there's no impact at all to them financially?
Correct.
Okay. I think that might have been it. Yeah, I think that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you.
I, in looking at the document, the cover we have, public budget implication says 751,500, but the contract says not to exceed the amount of 700,000.
Yeah, so, yeah, when we put that information originally out there, it was with an anticipated start date of the Tuesday after Labor Day. But as things have rolled out, we think that September 12th will be more in line with when we'd start, so that original 751 was with an earlier start date.
No, I was just trying to understand.
Thank you for this presentation. I guess this question is for Dr. Smith or Mr. McFadden. Are there other companies that we looked at? Did we get bids? Are there other companies like this? And if so, did we get bids from them, quotes from them?
I don't believe we're required to go to bid for a service of this nature, so we wouldn't have done that. But Tom did his diligence with looking at different groups, and this was one that we are both been familiar with. Again, he explained that there was a relationship prior, a few years ago, when they were a different iteration. And it's also an organization that I have some familiarity with, and so does Dr. Francois. And they are in a number of districts who have all shared really positive feedback, as Shane mentioned. And I believe you're also next door in Duarte, are you not?
We are, yeah.
Yeah.
My apologies for the word bid, I meant quote. So, I wanted to know if we did get quotes from anyone. So, you looked into some other companies and didn't find that they were at the level where you should ask for a quote?
So, when I researched Elavo, I found that they would seem to meet our needs, so I wanted to bring that to the board to be able to service these students as soon as possible. So, I did not look at other, getting other bids in that nature. You know, my impetus is to be able to serve these kids as soon as possible, so.
And thank you for that passion. I really, I see it, I know it, and I do appreciate it. I am also looking at the money, so it's difficult for all of us to be looking at this need and this amount of money. So, I appreciate, but I'm not sure on the question, on the answer to the question, were there other quotes gotten from other companies?
There were not.
No.
And I would add to that, though. There really aren't a ton of competitors, if any, in the space that this particular group is in with respect to what they do. I'll, just to review with the board, for a little while, there were some discussions with the city regarding doing some kind of joint partnership with after-school programs and sports in particular and things like that. Tom mentioned specifically that this was an area of need for his program, having some kind of opportunity to expand into the space of physical activity. When the discussions with the city around that topic, for one reason or other, moved in different directions or ceased to be, Tom still had the same interest and the same desire of trying to find a partner that would provide this type of opportunity for his students in after-school programs. And again, Elavo really is, there are after-school people, but in terms of social emotional well-being and physical activity, they really don't have a competitor that I'm aware of. Beyond that, though, they are the best I have heard from people I trust, people who have experienced their work, that do a fantastic job, including one of our neighbors, but also including some of the districts that he's mentioned. Shane, would you want to speak more to that?
Oh, I'm not finished with my questions, sorry.
I was going to ask Shane if he wanted to speak more to the point, Ms. Lock, or are you no longer interested in that answer, or?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Why don't you go ahead and speak and I'll finish my questions?
Yeah, sure. The only sort of context I can provide is just, obviously, being in the industry that we are, we're very well aware of the people who are in our similar space or area. And I touched on a little bit with, you know, YMCA's and Boys and Girls Club. Those are your traditional ACIS-funded after-school programs. And we are getting calls every day about districts needing to fill staff positions beyond what those local organizations and agencies are able to do. Vast majority of our programs are actually in partnership with them. We work very close with them all the time because they are now calling us themselves saying, "Hey, we've worked with this district for 20 years and we've always serviced about 100 kids per site. Now, we have 200, 300 per site and we have no idea what to do. Can we put you in touch with our Assistant Superbad Services? Who's our contact and, you know, can you come help us with this?" And all the, you know, conversations and meetings and, you know, engagement we've had over the last couple of years, we have yet to find someone who's, you know, filling a similar space and support.
So, one of my next questions was going to be, we have a relationship with YMCA, Santa Anita Family YMCA, and Boys and Girls Club. Did we, did you have a conversation with them? Have you pursued that avenue?
We're going to have a conversation with Boys and Girls Club scheduled for next week to talk about their servicing of Mayflower and their waitlist and how they can meet that and the ELOP dollars that can be allocated to Mayflower.
Help me understand and help me remember, you know, my, I'm an alumni of the program and have benefited greatly from it, but, so help me remember. Why are we in Week Two and seeing this great need? Did the request come rolling in, you know, or did it come in, you know, after the first day of school yesterday, last week? Or did things change from the end of school last year or the middle of summer last year?
So, we, I really think it speaks to intentionally reaching what we want to reach, which is the unduplicated students, giving them access first. That is a point in the ELOP grant itself. We opened up registration July 5th, I believe it was. So, early July, we opened up a priority registration for our unduplicated student count to give them first access. And then we had an open registration for the rest of the community. As the summer wore on, of course, we gathered more interest and people were registering as school, as the opening of school loomed ahead, the sooner that date came, the more and more enrollment that came in. And by that time, because of our staffing capacity, we, you know, those students that were wanting to come into the program were placed on the waitlist. So, it was ongoing since July, but it has picked up steam as the start of school is upon us.
Thank you. What other, I don't know if Mr. McFadden or Ms. Smith or Dr. Smith would answer this question, but what other things, specific things would we use ELOP for? Is ELOP only for after-school, before and after-school programs?
Yes, it is only for before and after-school programs. In addition to the largest cost of that will be human capital to service those students. We are also under the obligation to provide programming for intercession days, 30 intercession days. That will be an additional cost that we still have to plan. So, those intercession days will be providing programming on days when school is not in service, so Thanksgiving, vacation, the winter holiday break, spring holiday, you know, some days in the summer. So, that still has to be planned and that would, you know, be part of the ELOP dollars that would be spent.
ELOP is only for before and after, and intercession?
Correct.
You have made some, some promises, some guarantees, some assurances, let's call it, that you are going to get us the number of staff that we need. What, I'm just going to ask it, what happens if you don't? What happens if you promise us 12 staff and you said it would, you said it would be 16?
Yeah, we always have floater coaches, we always have that overage.
So, let's say you say, "Okay, we're going to give you 16 coaches," and we say, "Okay, we're going to give you this amount of money and you give us 10 coaches."
Yeah, well, for starters, you'll never be charged for anything that isn't executed in terms of a service. So, whereas I, you know, I never love speaking in guarantees, but I will say like 99% likelihood that we will fulfill this contract. But if for some reason we are not able to, we would never charge you for anything that didn't take place. And the, just to speak to some of the scope and size of the contracts that we have fulfilled in 100% capacity in recent years, we've worked with Fontana Unified School District, we placed 130 coaches across 37 school sites, four hours a day, five days a week, with complete capacity. We worked with Pasadena, did 26 coaches there. I have individual LUSD schools that, just based off their size alone, need about seven or eight coaches to fulfill different requirements and needs. So, I have utter confidence that our 12 and the 16 floater coach positions that we need to fill is something, is a lift that we can deliver upon. But honestly, I'm, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I've been becoming a bit of a mini-expert on ELOP, which is this extended learning day program, and I have even mapped out some of the expectations based off of parent interest. And if your numbers do move to 20 or 30 or 50 or 70, we'll be able to staff that as well.
May I? Tom, that's going to come to you. Of the funding from the ELOP, what do you have earmarked for it now, besides this?
So, the intercession days will be the next large funding.
About how much money is that, round numbers?
We don't have an idea yet because we need to program, we need to create the programming in terms of hours of service and in terms of how many students would be serviced. So, we're going to have to gauge in a process where we can gauge the amount of interest there is, the amount of service hours, and then who's going to staff it. So, you know, we'll have to align that through the grant dollars that we have available.
Okay. Besides the, besides that one issue, you have, there's no designs on any of the other $2.8 million?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And this is going to be for Ms. Smith. How often do we get funded with this money?
So, this past year, the governor had put his initiative to have after-school care. It was ongoing at first, but now, it was one time at first last year. Now, it is going to be ongoing to continue to support schools in their after-school care for all their students.
Okay, so what was initially a one-time fund is now ongoing, was, oh, man, that's a guarantee that I'd like to see from Sacramento. So, we're funded from '22, '23. When do we know that we're going to get to '23, '24? When do we see that?
So, we'll probably see an update in January at the governor's January proposal. And then in May, after their discussions, they'll decide, you know, if the funding per student will go up or go down.
And how much did we get last year for it?
Last year, we got a little over $1 million.
So, $1 million. What I'm trying to figure out is, if this is as successful as it sounds like it may be, and we're spending 3/4 of a million dollars today, how many more students will we be able to take before we won't have enough money to take them again? And I can't extrapolate the unknown out far enough and fast enough to figure out what that variable is. Boy. And I'm reluctant to say, "Let's do something in '22, '23 and then have it, the carpet yanked out from underneath us in '23, '24 and we strand people yet again." Not to say I wouldn't do something for the kids today because of what may happen tomorrow. I'm just trying to get this all, it's, they're really big numbers for a very small group of people. That's the problem. And it's a huge problem that we have to solve because it's a, it's a service that's being demanded of us from the people who we have enrolled. And I am sympathetic to that. I am, this is a logarithmic leap of faith. I don't like taking that kind of step with this much money, but okay, I'm done. My speech is over.
I understand your concern here. Having worked with government on the federal side for 32 years now, I know that if you don't use it, you lose it. And they're definitely, Sacramento is looking to see how much of this grant money is actually being spent. And they're going to change the numbers based on that. Just, just saying. So, I just wanted to add that.
So, Ms. Smith, last year, we got $1 million in ELOP money?
No, no, no.
And this year, we got $3 million?
2.8 million.
Sorry, rounding up.
And if I could add, I knew that Tom hasn't had an opportunity to sort of think through a lot of the things that we could do with intercession. There's been a lot of great idea generation in terms of partnering with summer school and having continued after-school programming during summer school and expanding that for parents as well. So, there are a lot of things that we can do with those intercession days, whether they're spring break camps or, you know, winter break camps, that will also eat up that pot of funding.
If I may, I'd also like to add to that. When it comes to summer programs and intercession, that is some, an area where we can, I mean, we heard our summer school presentation this evening, I mean, that is an area we can shore up tremendously in the law I asked us to. The other piece, though, is also to consider. Part of the governor's new budget was particularly generous to schools in terms of making investments. I mean, it's not just the ELOP funding that went up. If you recall, there's other pots of money that the governor's provided for various programs.
Ryan, can I just stop that? I mean, to stop you from, it's the governor, the governor and being generous to schools is just a real hard pill to swallow. It's, we can't even get Prop 98 funded correctly. So, the fact that you get the crumbs that fall off the table for something else, I don't consider being generous, I think it's, we should be funded properly because we are the ones who are in charge of educating our students. I just ask that when we, the government, right now, the state of California decided to fund this right now, I don't know if it's generous or not. If it was generous, there would be lots of money for teachers and things like that that we wouldn't have to argue about at all because it would be capedace with inflation if that were the case. That's all. I just, those kinds of words matter to me when I think about, you know, I stand there like a popper with my hand out and Sacramento's going to put pennies into it. And we're expected to do our job. And then in a couple of years' time from now, we'll get the edict from Sacramento that says, "Sorry, your money's dried up." I'm going to look at these great people that we hired and say, "Jeez, I'm really sorry, we don't have any money now." And there'll be some really fine people without jobs. That's the kind of things that I've had to work with on this board. And I think everybody who's been around education for more than 10 minutes has seen that cycle over and over and over again. Sorry for interrupting, but I have a very strong opinion on the generosity of Sacramento. I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. More discussion or questions? Ms. Becero, will you please call the roll?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Thank you. I'm voting yes because this money is dedicated specifically to this. Um, I have appreciated watching your, um, management, your direction, your foresight, your energy into this program for many years. You know, I've been part of this program for many years and I appreciate what you're looking at. And I trust you, um, with, uh, referring this company to us. Um, and it's extremely important that we get these kids into an after school and before school program. That's the primary. It has, it is difficult to vote that way, looking at the amount of money. Um, but, um, we've got the money at this moment. I appreciate it coming from Sacramento, um, and going towards this. And so as I mentioned, my vote is yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank, you, give you some applause too. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to business services, item number four, Ms. Smith, agreement with USA Alarm Systems, Inc.
The Board of Education.
To install cameras.
The Board of Education is requested to approve a contract with USA Alarm for the installation of 22 exterior cameras at Santa Fe Middle School. USA Alarm is the current provider of our district-wide alarm system. They are also responsible for the installation of the camera system at the diff, the district office and C E L C. We are looking to expand camera installation to all campuses, starting with Santa Fe. The timeline for installation, once board approved, will take about two weeks from start to finish. And the installation will be after school hours.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Um, I have a question. Um, thank you for this. And, um, I'd like to know, you know, I have a Ring camera on my, at my house. So it goes bling and I can look and I can see, you know, that there's a bird out there or something like that. With these cameras, are they monitored? If so, by whom? And how often?
So the software setup is directed by the district. So for example, if we want to have the office manager and the site principal or the assistant principal have a login, those will be the individuals that are able to log in and monitor the cameras at any time.
And who, so we have that option. Who would say to do that? Is that something that the site principal would do? Is it something that you would do? Is it something that the superintendent would do? Um, is it a joint discussion? It, and it sounds like it doesn't automatically happen. It's an option.
Correct. Typically, the site administrator would determine who they feel was most appropriate to have access based on need. Typically, it would be the office manager. That person is sitting at the front. And where Santa Fe is located, um, we've experienced some transient activity. And so the ability to see the perimeter, the entire exterior is helpful to the office manager who could communicate to staff if there happens to be a situation happening outside.
Or, or something, you know, maybe you want to have the teachers go another direction or have someone just know what, what, what is there? And I appreciate, um, the attention to this. I know that it's something that, um, you had addressed over the summer and maybe at the, the end of last year also. So I appreciate, um, that we're attending to this. So this is through USA Alarm System. So they provide just the cameras, right? There isn't, um, personnel associated with these cameras on the USA side?
They provide the labor to install the cameras. They did a walk of our campus of all of our IDF rooms because there's a technology. IDF? IDF or?
What are, what is that?
Those are our computer rooms where all the servers are stored. Um, each school site has, has a room like that. And so with the software, they need to make sure that they have access to those points. The software, the cameras, they all talk to each other. So USA Alarm has already done a campus walk and we have provided them with the locations. And so they will install the cameras and the labor.
So they will be doing the installation. I imagine they'll be doing the installation where they can, you know, as they direct it, will, they'll be able to look at it. My concern is that, um, the, what is, the view from the cameras remains, uh, on our property or, um, associated with our property. I don't want the cameras going into, um, you know, a neighbor's um, yard or anything like that. So are they going to monitor that? And they'll, when they install it, they'll be able to see it and they'll be able to manually tweak it and make sure that it's exactly where we want it to be?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. Any questions? Ms. Becero, would you kindly call the roll?
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item five. In human resources, proposed renewal of collective bargaining agreement between the Monrovia Teachers Association and the Monrovia Unified School District. Mr. Dr. Puccia.
Thank you. The Board of Education is requested to ratify the proposed renewal of the collective bargaining agreement between the Monrovia Teachers Association and Monrovia Unified School District for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. The rationale, the collective bargaining agreement is renewed every three years. This agreement expired in June 30th of 2015. As the beginning is being presented to the board for review, including all contract language adjustments that were made.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say congratulations. That's amazing that, um, our teachers' union has been working, um, continuously in some difficult years in between, um, since the last ratification of 2015. And we're almost to 2023. So congratulations to the work that was put into, to reach an agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just curious, does this now go to print like a binded copy? Or is it just digital now, electronic for all the employees?
It, it's typically electronic. Back in the day, we would make a million copies of them, but that, those days are over. We'll, we'll, and we can print copies for anybody who would like it.
I'll just retain this one. I'm good. I was just wondering for the employees, how do they get it?
It's, it's digital. It'll be posted on the website as soon as we, we can get it up there.
All right. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. One second.
Second, I'll second it.
Motion in the second. Any other questions? Ms. Becero, would you please call the vote?
Board member Golar?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board president Lockerbie?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations.
Madam President, before we move on to information items, may I say something?
Yes.
May, may I?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, um, related to that particular item, I wanted to congratulate, uh, MTA's leadership for their dedication over a number of years, getting this particular agreement to the point today, um, where it was approved and ratified on their side, but also, um, by our board. I think that's monumental considering that this contract was about 10 years old. And I'm grateful to the HR leadership prior to my arrival. I'm grateful to Dr. Francois, Dr. Puccia, as well as Ms. Smith for all working together with, um, Mr. Medina and his team and their leadership prior to Mr. Medina being our president. And indeed, I do think this is a proud moment for everyone.
Thank you for adding those words. I appreciate it. Moving on to information items.
Madam President, may I just, just real quick. I need to publicly apologize to Dr. Smith for the tone and cutting you off. And that was not professional of me and I need to do, I need to apologize in public in the same arena in which I did it. I'm sorry.
Good group of people here. Thank you. Now, we are moving on to information items. Number one, college and career access pathways. Partnership agreement renewal with Citrus College for the early college program at Monrovia High School. Quite a mouthful.
Dr. Francois, would you like to introduce this information item?
Definitely. The Board of Education will receive for information, the college and career access pathways, CCAP partnership agreement renewal with Citrus Community College District for the early college program at Monrovia High School. Further, the Board of Education is requested to conduct a public hearing regarding this renewal agreement during the September 28th, 2022 board meeting.
Questions or comments? Travanti?
Yes, thank you. Um, item, letter J, and I, I speak to courses offered in school district shuttle adhere to the official course outline of record and student learning outcomes established by the Associated Academic Department with the college district. Then I, courses with low enrollment may be canceled by mutual agreements between the college district and the school district. Should low enrollment be observed, the college district will contact the school district at least 10 days prior to the start of the course to discuss conditions and work toward a final agreement on how to proceed.
I don't know that that's really been happening. Do we have, does Citrus have an assigned coordinator, point of contact? So that when there is low enrollment, those kind of, um, issues can be worked out before a class is just arbitrarily canceled?
I'll let both Dr. Francois and Dr. Hart Rhodos, uh, speak to that particular point and then I can add something as well.
Thank you for your question. Uh, yes, in fact, that, uh, portion of the contract agreement is new this year to protect us. That was our request. Um, so that will go into effect with this new contract. Um, I am their contract, uh, contact, excuse me, and I work with Dr. Rabatoy, Nelda Chavez, and Teresa um, at, at the college. They are our dedicated coordinators that work with me to facilitate the program. So we have worked in partnership to develop and augment this contract.
Perfect.
To make sure we're protected.
Glad to hear that because, um, it happened the beginning of this school year.
It did.
And, um, I know this is just regarding our early college program, but we have an arrangement for summer school and that happened in summer school as well. So like, thank you for addressing that as part of this agreement.
I have a request. Um, as Ms. Travanti alluded to there, um, you and your staff had to do some shuffling over summer and this year, and I appreciate how well you were able to navigate that. There's language in this contract, um, like for instance, 2.5 student registration and enrollment. The college district shall provide the necessary application and registration forms. The college district and the school districts shall collaborate to provide ancillary and support services. Ancillary and support services in the same areas of outreach and recruitment, assessment, placement, counseling, tutoring, and other related services is necessary. And C, the college district shall be responsible for processing student applications for dual enrollment under this agreement. What I'm trying to get to is a request for better communication. Because unforeseeable is unforeseeable. I, I understand that. There's foreseeable. We know when the first day of summer school is going to start. We know when the first day of school is going to start. We know that there's a four-year trajectory. We know things that are concrete. And I'd like to either see something in this language or have a conversation with them so that they understand how important communication is and timely communication. Communication the night before, the day of, or the afternoon after is not timely and it's, um, very stressful for families. So is there something that, um, can be added to this language? Or is that just something that you can have a, a gentlewoman's agreement or discussion about, um, for communication? Because it's, it, it, it's not just stressful for families, it's stressful for staff having to shuffle last minute.
I'll speak to that. I think part of it is beyond this is having a strong working relationship with them. Or we have some common understandings of how we want to work together. I believe Dr. Schultz is committed to that. We've spoken. Because there have been a couple of issues. And while this particular agreement is really specific to the pathway that's really known as our early college program, there are offerings we do in partnership with them that go beyond this. Summer school goes beyond this particular agreement. However, if we're going to remain partners, what you said couldn't be any more spot on. Is that there needs to be an understanding on their part of when an issue arises or they're thinking about canceling a class or moving away from it, that there's plenty of communication move, you know, going forward with us. And there, I'm sure there's things that we need to do better as well for them.
Of course, I'm not trying to cast.
Oh, I know, and I know you're not. No, you, I, I do know that you're a big supporter of Citrus College and, and our partnership with them. So I'm hopeful that as we move forward, Dr. Hart Rhodos and Dr. Francois, they've already made inroads with their counterparts, uh, at Citrus. And then I've already established a relationship with Dr. Schultz. I'm confident that we'll be able to work through those things in the future as we move forward. Um, because as some of these issues have come up, there was just as much surprise on their end that this occurred or went down that way. And there was quite a bit of effort to fix it as quickly as possible on, on their part. So I, I definitely believe that, I definitely hope that you'll see improvements in that area. You know, and it doesn't just extend to that, it extends to other areas. For example, working together to ensure the students are successful in the coursework. And that takes a lot of conversation and dialogue as well.
I appreciate that answer. Thank you for letting me ask it. Are there other questions or comments?
Um, this is an information item, so it is not to be voted on. So that is information. So, um, I appreciate the, since it's information, I'd like to add, if I may, there is an, uh, August 25th, early college meeting at the, um, at the high school. So, is the board invited? I know it's a, it's a parent meeting.
It's a parent meeting for the parents of the program, but you're always welcome, of course.
But yes, I'd just like to let the board know that that is the 25th, that I think 5:30.
I believe it's 5:00 PM.
We'll find out the time for sure. I'm sure it's 5:00 PM. Thank you for that.
Other questions on this item? Thank you. Moving on to pending board issues, the Board of Education will receive status information on identified tasks and review issues of interest for future attention. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things to highlight. Um, first of all, in the next Friday update, we will include some information, at least we intend to, um, around our athletic coach certification and concussion training, just to verify that all of our coaches um, have gone through that particular certification. Uh, there's also been a request to take a look and review at the specific training beyond the kind of, I won't call them checkbox training. beyond the kind of, I won't call them checkbox trainings, that every coach must do to see what other types of things might be helpful to us, our coaches as they interface with young athletes year to year. Who are changing. And I think that's important that we look at that. So we will have some information further down the road about what that looks like and what those certifications and trainings would be. But for now, we'll make sure that the board is provided with some specific information around that. We'll also share in an upcoming board meeting, we're not sure which one in September, might be the first one, although it could be the second, just depends on how things lay out regarding our plans around CGI. Last year, Dr. Drew led a fantastic presentation about the work that he was doing in particular at Plymouth around CGI. Now that he's in the director position, we've asked him to, ready to share with the board our direction with expanding CGI and ensuring consistency across all of our school sites. And I hope that you're looking forward to that because I am, and it's really exciting work. We will also, we get into an un-audited actual season. So we'll have our first un-audited actual annual report in, at the first meeting in September as well. While I'm at it, I would like to give a shout out to Fiscal, who has been working really hard to officially close out the books from last year. I know it feels a little weird closing out the books in August for last year, that's how it goes. And they've done a fantastic job working through that, and I know that hasn't been easy on top of all the other things. In addition to that, just as a friendly reminder, very excited about our first strategic planning meeting of the year, which will kick off on Friday. We do have somewhat of a board subcommittee that participates in that, both member Travanti and Clark Anderson will be our, the board's representatives to that. And I know Dr. Francois's been hard at work and I know we'll have a fantastic session. And then last but certainly not least, we will begin the process of getting boardwalk scheduled. I know the board is, I know the board has expressed interest in making sure that we go to elementary schools, but also making sure that we go to at least one of our secondary schools, a high school in particular. I'd also like to share some information with the board about some possible visits that we can do in smaller groups to look beyond our school district, at some exemplar schools out there at varying levels to see what their approach to doing education in different ways could potentially look like. And what are some big takeaways that we could, we could bring with us? And that folds nicely into our strategic planning process. But beyond that, I think it's always good if we can together have an opportunity to collectively see some things. Or wonderment is Vice President Golar. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a few items that I would like to bring up during pending board issues for consideration. I apologize for, lost my page here. So I'm just going to go off the cuff. That always works well for me. I had, a few meetings ago, I had asked for you to investigate solar. And thank you for the update that you provided after that request. I see that you provided for the board information about a presentation that we had had here in 2019. I appreciate that. Forgive me for not being more specific about my ask. My ask is actually to investigate grant options. At the last CSBA conference, one of the seminars that I attended made it pretty clear that there are significant grant opportunities out there for this. And I would love to be, to take a look at that with the grant opportunity instead of having to look at it as a financial responsibility at all, exclusively or partially on the district. So if you could look into the, all the grant opportunities that are, that are available, I'd appreciate an update on that.
The first board update, last board up we did, update we did, was the first step in addressing what you brought to our attention. And there is a process for that in terms of identifying who the grant people are. But also beyond that, whether or not it makes financial sense for us to do that type of work. Ms. Smith and her team will continue to move the needle and bring updates when ready.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if I was clear about asking for the grant research to be done. I appreciate that. My second board issue is. Oh, I would like us to reinstate board to department liaisons. Is that something that we could bring back now?
I would have to get back to you on that. That would be a board discussion ultimately, and it would be up to the board to decide that if it wanted to do that. As you know, the board previously had come to an understanding that we would not do that.
Thank you. When we came to that understanding, personally, I didn't realize that it was a board bylaw. And it is, and I just recently discovered that. So I'd like to reinstate that, that process, that program that we had. So since it's a board bylaw, do we bring it back on the next agenda?
I think it would be up, ultimately up to the board to decide that if it wanted to continue with that particular piece, or if it wanted to do something different as it has done now for a year.
Because it is a board bylaw. It's 9141.
My limited knowledge and vague recollection is that we did so at our reorg. Or at our reorg meeting.
Right.
Where we delineate department liaison, community partner.
Right.
Distribution of whose, what is it? Chamber of Commerce.
MCC.
Right. So we typically take that up.
In December.
At, at the reorg meeting. That's what I remembered.
And the board chose not to do that at that time.
So as I said, I didn't realize at that time that it is a bylaw. I would, I, I would like to go back to that practice. So can the board give me some direction?
The only question I have, it's not really a question, is guess, get an understanding, is a bylaw not a function of the board and its policies? I believe that it is.
I believe that it is also.
And if the board took a position and then expressed it as a policy not to do something. So I guess the only thing to do is to codify not doing it. Because if it's a bylaw, you just remove it the same way as you put it in. It's a function of a policy, I would think. I think what's, I think it's up to the individual board to do it. If it's under a board policy, if it's under egg code, then it's a law. I don't think it's an egg code. I think it's a policy.
But isn't a policy a rule that the?
Yeah, it's subject to change at any time.
It is. It's like a, it's like a suggestion, like you can follow it or not follow it.
Right. And I think the board, by its taking the position, nullified that part of, of it and moves on. I guess probably the only thing that wasn't done, it was removed from as, as a function of that. So I guess the thing to do is to codify it by removing it.
Well, I'd like to bring it back for discussion.
Sure.
So could you please put it on the next board agenda? Thank you. And the last.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. President Lockerbie, other than the fact that you found it in the bylaw, was there an underlying reason or another reason why you want those liaison roles?
I found, I don't know why I'm getting feedback. I found benefit, a benefit in that. I appreciated being able to go deeper into not only the agenda, but the department when I liaised with. And I, I miss doing that. And there's even some language in the bylaw that kind of answers that question for me, for you. It recognizes the importance of thorough preparation, strengthens, strengthens preparations. It just, those are the things that I felt and I miss it being gone. And especially now with new executive cabinet, I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to have us all, for me personally, to be able to have a connection.
But just because we went that route as a board consensus, doesn't preclude you from having meetings and meeting with the different department heads. I mean, you can still do that. I can still do that. I think Dr. Smith would appreciate that we work through him. That would be the appropriate way to do that. But I mean, just because we had consensus on that, doesn't mean that we can't meet with one of the cabinet members. Because we have questions, right? Because something comes up and we want clarification, but just because we should be working through Dr. Smith on that.
So you're saying I should be able to reach out to Dr. Pachia? Sorry, I'm just. And say, hey, I want to discuss with you further this issue under your, that's on your agenda?
I, I think we've always had that ability. But you go to the superintendent and I'm sorry, are you through? I'm having bad foot and mouth tonight and I want to make sure I don't do it again.
It's just when you're board president, your liaison is the superintendent, right? Okay. Go ahead.
President Lockerbie, I'm sorry, your microphone is off.
Thank you. I was wondering why I wasn't getting any reverb. So I appreciate being able to liaise with the superintendent this year. But I'm thinking about, you know, in the future, wanting to be able to liaise with another department head. That's just for me. I, I benefited from it. I'm wondering if anyone else benefits, misses it, would benefit from it. So I'd like to bring it back.
But it's to my point, every board member has the right to meet with any of the cabinet members. It is best to go to the superintendent with the reason why you want to meet. So that the superintendent is clear on what's happening. So there's no blind spots, if you will. So if you wanted to get more information about the budget and you go to see Ms. Smith, then you would just tell Dr. Smith that I want to, I, I want to spend a little time going over, I want to go over the budget with our CBO. And that way he knows that it's happening. And I think that's fair so that he's always in the loop of what's happening. And for me, I, I want to have another meeting, like I want a hole in the head. So if, I, I don't want to do that. I mean, we can talk about it, but I'm going to tell you where I'm going to land right now.
I kind of, I thought I, I might know.
Right. I think my feeling hasn't changed since our meeting, which was, no, I'm happy not to have another meeting right now.
And I, I like to be able to reach out and get information. And of course, we're still, you know, maintaining the the Brown Act. But I, I appreciate being able to go to the department heads. I miss that. And I'd like to be able to do that. So, you know, I appreciate the perspective and that I can still do that. And so if I choose to do that in the future, I'll. Both of you have the same questioning for a brow. What are you questioning?
Because what I thought I heard was by not designating person to liaison with a specific department, we actually have removed the limitations, if you will, that affords you, me, any of us, the opportunity to go and have conversation, meeting, and time. Because truth be told, technically, I still have been working with HR and Student Services in terms of the board policy reviews. So I started there and I, I have continued to function in that capacity. But I feel like what I'm hearing, that doesn't limit me from then, if I, I will never come to talk about numbers.
See, I always need to talk about numbers.
No worries. Whoa. I won't say never. I shouldn't say never. I shouldn't say never.
You mean like, where's Dana's office?
I know where Dana's office is. It's over there where Linda Dempsey used to be, by David Conway. I'm familiar with that whole area. But it doesn't preclude me from being able to have a conversation with the deputy superintendent or HR. So I don't know that your interest is not being met in our current configuration of not having assigned liaisons. You're still afforded the opportunity to do what it sounds like you want to be able to do.
I had the impression that I wasn't. So.
Well, I, I guess I would like to ask a clarifying question. Anytime you or any other board member has asked to have additional information, we've always made that available. Not too long ago, you spent time with one of our assistant superintendents, Ms. Lockhart, around your concerns related to a policy with hair. Or lice, I should be more specific. Ms. Anderson has requested additional information related to several board policies related to Student Services. We've made staff available. And that hasn't been uncommon with other board members either. So just to clarify, are you saying that I have denied an opportunity for you to spend time with staff when requested? I just want to be clear because I don't recall that happening.
I think I, my understanding of removing this practice made me think that. That there would no longer be one-to-one with your designated cabinet member. So I thought that that's, that's what that meant.
Well, when we had the discussion about it last, it was around if you need information of any kind from myself or from anybody on the team, the request would come to me as superintendent. And then I would see to it that you would have whatever information you needed. And if that required a conversation, then that would be something that I would help facilitate. I hope no one else on the board has felt the way you do because I believe that I've gone out of my way to make sure that you have access to whatever information you need. That's why I wanted to clarify if you felt that I had done that.
I just felt that I missed having this, this structured relationship. Because in the past, what I had done is there were scheduled meetings. You know, if I liaised with business department before before the, you know, before the meeting, I would have an hour or so with that department or another department. So I think I felt that taking this away took away my ability to do that. So.
Well, if you ever would like, or any other member would like to spend time with one of the executive cabinet members around a particular topic, I'm happy to help facilitate that.
Perfect. Thank you.
The other piece though with this is that when I came on board as superintendent and working closely with the board through our retreat process and talking. and working closely with the board through our retreat process and talking about our norms, one of the things that was quite important to the board was making sure that every board member had access to the same information, to the same level of detail. And that's why, again, the processes and the patterns that we followed have been meant to do exactly that. And we do that in a number of ways, through our Friday updates, of course, through our board Q, agenda Q and As, through one-on-one meetings, and then through everything else in between, which would include that. However, with having specific liaisons, it makes that part more difficult. Because then one of you becomes the keeper of more information than the others. And that's not particularly a good practice for board governance, in my opinion. There may be different opinions on it. But we've tried to alleviate that by making sure that all of you have access to whatever information you need. And if that requires talking to certain people, we've always made that available while I've been superintendent. And I think that it's worked quite well.
If I could add, I, since I've been on the board, which is getting close to four years now, the board updates have exponentially improved since you became superintendent. So I do appreciate the comprehensive board updates that we're getting on Fridays, because I have less questions because of that. I may still have questions on some things, but, um, you know, follow-up kind of items. But I do appreciate the detail that is being put into our board updates, because that is helpful. And we are, like the point you made, we are all receiving that information. So I, I'm good with not having a liaison. I'm busy enough and I have the chamber liaise that I do and other things. So I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, I appreciate the, I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate you letting me share what my, what has confused me and how we can move forward. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate knowing that I can reach out and get more information. And it, my saying that doesn't mean, pardon me, doesn't mean that I don't get enough information. It was just the, the, the focus. Because you and I spend a lot of our time going over everything. And I hadn't thought to just say, hey, you know what? I need, I need some focus and some understanding. Because I'm still, I've only been on the board for, you know, a little less than four years. So I still appreciate learning.
Absolutely, I think we all appreciate learning. That's why we're here. And in the end, when you have a request for information, please let me know. And I will see to it that we facilitate getting you a response or getting you time with people. But I need to know those things so I can help.
Of course.
I thought we had established that, but it's good to clarify.
Absolutely. Oh, and then finally, she left before I was able to get a clear answer to this question. Maybe you have a better idea. But I'd like to bring back Ms. Meramontes, who came and talked to us about Nature for All. I am not sure if she wants support for a bill that is, has already been authored or has not been authored. I think it has already been authored. But I'd like to bring back on the next agenda board discussion about, about what she spoke to us today. Because I know that she was seeking support from school districts. Um, I would get clarification, what type of support she was seeking. But I'd like to bring that back on the next, a next agenda for discussion.
So to clarify, you want what exactly agendized? I, I guess, I'm afraid I'm not sure what you want to agendize, the discussion around
So we want to support, so Ms. Meramontes came today to ask for support for the public land act. Correct?
Okay.
So she is asking for our support.
So you want something on the agenda to discuss whether or not you want to support that?
Yes. And at that point, I will reach out to her and get more specifics to provide for the board, but I would like that on the next for us to vote on whether or not to support what she spoke to us about Nature for All today.
Okay. And we can take it. Thanks for clarifying.
And I'm sorry, I'm not exactly sure on, on that. Is it a resolution, is a letter? And she already addressed that it's act. So I'll, I'll get further information, bring it to the board. Moving on to future meeting dates, September 14th, September 28th, and October 12th at 6:30, our regular Board of Education meetings. Yes, Mr. Travanti?
President Lockerbie, I would like to make sure that going forward, we have the state of the schools, October 19th date for a future date on here, please? Thank you.
And I did mention for future dates, I did mention those are meeting dates. Uh, for new business, Labor Day, all sites are closed. Happy Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. We have back to school nights. You looked at me when I, when I giggled, when you were mentioning Dr. Smith calendaring the back to school night, or the boardwalks. Ms. Becerra isn't familiar with trying to coordinate all of our schedules yet. So that's why I was giggling. Welcome. That will be fun. And then we're looking at our back to school nights, which are exciting evenings for us to all attend. And that's, you can see Canyon Early Learning is September 15th, Brad Oaks is August 30th, Mayflower is the 25th, Mon, all of these are coming up so quickly. Yes, Monroe is the 30th, Plymouth is the 30th, Wild Rose is 25th, Clifton is the first, Santa Fe is the first, MHS is 31st, and Canyon Oaks Mountain Park is the 13th. So it's back to school and so many exciting activities coming up. Are there any other issues to bring up before the board this evening?
We would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of a very special girl. Valentina Maragon passed away on August 6th, 2022, at the age of four. Valentina's family had this to say about her. God granted, granted us an angel by the name of Valentina Celeste on August 6th, 2022. Although our time with her was cut short, our hearts will forever be filled with joy and honor because we were able to be graced with her beautiful presence. Valentina was our warrior princess. I want to thank the Maro, Maroquin family for sharing their amazing warrior princess with all of us in the district. We are inspired by her strength and her love and her grace while dealing with the disease called Wolf-Herschel syndrome. It's something that you can look up and better understand the battle that this young warrior went through, as well as her parents. And I know that there is also a GoFundMe page to support the family in their loss. Thank you so much for sharing your beautiful girl with us. And our thoughts and prayers are with the Maroquin family at this time. With no further business before the board, we stand adjourned at 10:10 PM.